All right, here we go. The fifth meeting of the 26th Council will come to order. All councilors are present this evening. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Grouse and the Pledge of Allegiance in Spanish led by Counselor Pena. A moment of silence first and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Civic Plaza passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from the council staff at the table near the chambers entrance. Members of the public, city staff, the media have the ability to view this meeting in person live streams through four different platforms on GovTV, on Comcast 16, the GovTV website, YouTube, Zoom webinar. The live streams can be assessed from most smartphones, tablets, or computers. Also, this meeting is closed captioned and you can maybe enable the closed captioning services on your television device at this time. The video recording of this and all past council meetings will remain available for viewing at any time on the council's website. Council staff is available via telephone if members of the public need assistance finding the videos online. Please call 505-768-3100 for assistance during business hours, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. Council will take a break at approximately 7:00 PM this evening if needed. With regard to decorum in the chambers, we want tonight's proceeding to be as civil, respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks. Please no applause or outbursts during the meeting. This meeting will go a lot further if we're respectful of one another. And we have some other just instructions on decorum and that's available in the back and you're welcome to read those. We're going to start with proclamations and presentations. We have three presentations tonight. First is a presentation of Dr. Michelle Sanchez, Director of Arts and Culture, providing an update regarding Route 66 revitalization. This is Counselor Pena. Sorry, Counselor Pena, I read that. We'll let you introduce them.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, that's fine. Dr. Sanchez, I think she's here somewhere. It doesn't look like maybe she's arrived yet. Yeah, so why don't we move on to Counselor Bassan if you'd like? And we'll defer. She's not here.
Okay. Well, let's go on to Counselor Bassan's presentation of National Institute of Flamenco.
Mr. President, thank you. It's my honor to have requested the presentation for the National Institute of Flamenco. Tonight, we have Ms. Marisol Encinas. I believe we also have Eva Encinas, Eloy Gonzalez, and the Niños y Tiños Flamencos. So, Marisol, I went and toured the facility. I think that, you know, we've worked well, I think, as a city and as the council to make sure that we are collaborating and doing what we can to support many different programs. But this is the one that I think was very beneficial and I thought it could be fun and festive for us to see a little bit of what they do and also hear what the National Institute of Flamenco does beyond just teaching flamenco. So, Marisol, welcome.
Thank you all. Thank you, President Lewis and members of the City Council. We appreciate being invited to be here today. As Counselor Bassan said, my name is Marisol Encinas. I'm the Executive Director of the National Institute of Flamenco. For nearly a century, my family has practiced and shared flamenco with our community. My mother, Eva Encinas, founded the National Institute of Flamenco in 1982, where we have seen decades of flamenco's power to improve the lives of children and families in Albuquerque. We serve all districts of Albuquerque with excellent flamenco performances and classes. We have expanded outreach offerings across the city. We are working on improving pay for our teaching artists and performers, continue to produce the largest, most important flamenco festival outside of Spain each year. And last year, this festival alone generated over 12 million economic impact dollars for the city of Albuquerque. Arts and culture industries account for 1 in 18 jobs in New Mexico, and we at the National Institute of Flamenco are a major employer in the industry. We believe that our neighbors in Albuquerque deserve to express themselves, thrive, and enjoy vibrant arts that speak to our culture. We respectfully ask for your consideration for funding for the fiscal year 2025 budget. We also hope that we can count on your support. It's my pleasure right now to introduce Eva Encinas, my mother, who's spearheaded, who's the reason we do all of this now, Eloy Gonzalez, our incredible guitarist, and the company, the student company members of Niños y Tiños, who are going to dance for you right now. Now, one of our young students who are all representing different districts from Albuquerque are going to say quick words.
Hello, I'm Aleah Trillo. I live in District 1. I've been dancing flamenco for six years and I love flamenco because it's part of how I connect to my culture and my history.
My name is Andrea Navarro. I live in District 2. And I love flamenco because it allows me to express myself in a very unique way. I'm a mother of five. I've been back. I love, I like to think, like, I'm a woman. I'm a woman. I'm a woman. I'm a woman. I'm a woman.
Venice lives in District 3.
I'm Jaden Grammer and I live in District 4. I love flamenco because it gave me a second family and they support me in countless ways and it's so much more than just dance.
Sofia lives in District 5.
My name is Everett Chambers. I live in District 6.
Six.
And I've been dancing for six years and I really love to do flamenco, dancing about the guitar, too. On, I don't know if it's together. I love to do flamenco.
And... I'm Bianca Mihares. I live in District 9. I'm the Education Programs Manager at the National Institute of Flamenco. I moved here from Miami, Florida to take this position and, as you can see, it's very inspiring to see the effect that flamenco has had on the youth of Albuquerque.
And again, my name is Marisol Encinas and I live in District 1. And the National Institute of Flamenco is also, our facility is in District 1, and we thank you for your consideration and for your time. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for being here, Mr. President. I just want to say that this was a great performance and I want to make sure that people understand and, councilors, if you haven't toured with Marisol, please reach out to her because it is so much more than, honestly, and I don't mean any disrespect, but it's more than just teaching people how to flamenco dance. This institute is so much more, it does so much for their creative education and growth as well. So, I really appreciate the time that we allowed for them to present and for them all coming to be here.
We'll go to our next presentation by Counselor, or Counselor present, or Counselor Grouse is presenting the next presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, we're going to have a presentation from Mr. Eric Garcia. He is the Superintendent of Police Reform to provide information about police reform.
Good evening, Council President, Counselor Grouse. As stated, I'm Eric Garcia. I'm the Superintendent of Police Reform. And first slide we'll start with will be our organizational structure. So, as you can see, we are separated from the Chief of Police. So, I don't answer to Chief Medina at all. I answer to Mr. Kevin Soroso, who's the Chief Financial Officer. Working for me, I have two majors, Major James Collins and Acting Major Dodi Camacho. Beneath each of them, they have commanders working for them on each side. So, Major Jimmy Collins is in charge of the disciplinary review process. That's the process that reviews every single disciplinary action that comes through the department. The reason we created this section was because we were having trouble meeting the requirements of the consent decree because we had over 20 disciplinary authorities throughout the department. We now have cut that down to four and now we are very close to being in compliance with these paragraphs that involve our disciplinary review process. Beneath Jimmy Collins are Commanders Henry Landavazo and Commander Sean Waite. They are the professional integrity commanders. They are the first two commanders that review disciplinary cases, misconduct cases, for our department. On the other side is Acting Major Dodi Camacho. She is over both Internal Affairs Divisions. We have two Internal Affairs Divisions, the Internal Affairs Force Division and the Internal Affairs Professional Standards Division. The Professional, the Internal Affairs Professional Standards Division is your standard in Internal Affairs that most departments have. That deals strictly with misconduct from internal complaints. The Force Division investigates all uses of force, all Level 2 and 3 uses of force. If any misconduct is generated from use of force, that is either handled by the Force Division itself or the Professional Standards Division. This is a breakdown of each of the two divisions. So, we have one commander under the Force Division, four deputy commanders, one lieutenant, and five sergeants. Currently, we have a total of 23 investigators. Six are sworn detectives and 17 are civilian investigators. We've actually done really well and found our civilian investigators have done a really good job investigating uses of force and misconduct. So, it has really helped the department and helped many levels throughout the rest of the department. Below the detectives, we have our administrative staff and our contact employees who help prepare the presentations for the Force Review Board. On the right-hand side, for Internal Affairs Professional Standards, we have one commander who's Acting Commander Ken Johnston. We have one deputy commander, one intake manager, and the intake manager is very critical to the entire process. So, whenever possible misconduct is identified in the department, we call it, an Internal Affairs request is completed. We call it an IAR. That is generated through the application, the web application, Blue Team. It goes to our intake manager, who's Olivia Mora. She determines, she evaluates the Blue Team entry, determines if it's a violation and where it's going to go for investigation. When investigation for misconduct could go back to the area command if it's a minor investigation, let's say a Class 6 or 7, which is our lowest, it could be sent to Internal Affairs Force Division if it came from that division, or it could be investigated by Internal Affairs Professional Standards. So, that position is very, very critical. We have one lieutenant, two sergeants, and in Professional Standards, we have a total of 11 investigators. Five of them are detectives and six are civilian investigators. And of course, we have our administrative staff. I'm going to explain the intake process a little more in detail now. So, when an IAR, the Internal Affairs request is submitted, it goes to the intake manager, like I said, Olivia Mora. From Olivia, she routes it either to Internal Affairs Professional Standards, Internal Affairs Force Division, or the area command for investigation. Once that investigation is completed, a packet called the disciplinary action packet is completed by the appropriate Internal Affairs. What that does is it lists the violations that are sustained in the investigation and it lists the possible range of any disciplinary action that might happen. From there, it goes to the Professional Integrity Commander Review. It's a two-level review by each commander. So, one commander will review it, either Landavazo or Waite, and then the other one will review it. From there, it goes to Major Collins for review. And if it's, if the disciplinary action is below 40 hours, Major Collins will conduct the predetermination hearing on that case. If there's an appeal from that case, I will handle the appeal. If the disciplinary action is 40 hours or greater, I handle a predetermination hearing on that case. Any appeals from my decision will go to the personnel board. Currently, we have a couple of different reports that are online. We just started now in January, our Internal Affairs Force Division Monthly Use of Force Reports. That's on the website. It's listed on the slide. We'll be doing this every month from now on. January was the first one. Each month, we'll be adding our statistics for each month into this website. On Internal Affairs Professional Standards, we do a quarterly report and that's also on the city website. That's basically a brief overview. I want to emphasize that the Chief of Police and I, although we work together, we are separate. So, my decisions go, answer directly to the mayor's office and it's made for a reason that way. That way, he can handle the operations of the department and I handle any disciplinary actions and any internal investigations on any cases that might arise. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. This is very interesting. I know that CPOA is completely different. Do you ever have anything to do with them?
Yes. So, I review every CPOA case that they investigate. So, the CPOA, they handle external complaints, so citizens' complaints go into CPOA. They conduct their investigation and I review each one of those. The Executive Director, Diane McDermott, will make recommendations and from there, it goes through a similar process. We're in Professional Integrity Division and up through the same review process as our internal complaints.
How did you, thank you, how did you come up with having so many investigators? You have quite a few. Is that necessary?
Counsel President, Counselor Grouse, yes, we determined, well, first, from the, for the Force Division, we were under a stipulated order to have a minimum of 25 investigators. We've realized we can do that with a shorter number. We've completed that order, so now we've got 23 in there right now. With the Professional Standards investigators, right now, they are handling probably about 10 to 12 investigations apiece. So, due to the number of complaints we're getting internally because of the Internal Affairs requests, actually, I'm probably going to need a couple more in the future.
Okay, thank you. Are you caught up on all of your complaints? How long does it typically take to complete an investigation?
So, in the investigations, we have 120 days to complete an investigation per the contract with the union. Our investigations usually completed before then, so right now, we're right on schedule. Also, there's also a timeline for our use of force cases and that's where that backlog had occurred in the past. But since we've taken over from EFIT and since EFIT has been here, we have not added any more cases to that backlog. So, we are keeping on pace with that unit as well.
Good. How far out are you on having all of the backlog taken care of?
I understand Mr. Nyer from EFIT stated we are on pace to be done by May.
Just in a couple months? That's great.
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent, okay. Thank you, I appreciate this, Counselor.
Counsel President, Counsel Vice President, I just wanted to add that the 25 was negotiated with the Department of Justice and there was a stipulated order entered and then we negotiated for the lower number recently. And it is also my understanding that EFIT is very close to being done.
That's great. Thank you for that follow-up.
Counselor Champagne. Thank you, Mr. President. Deputy Chief, it shows in your report here that you have 58 total use of forces investigations, Level 1, 2, and 3 during January of '24. Is this an average? Say, last year, did you average 60 a month of just the use of force?
Counsel President, Counselor Champagne, yes, that's about, we vary anywhere between 40 and about 70 depending on the month. Of course, the summer months, as you know, we're busier and we have more uses of force.
Thank you, Mr. President. Deputy Chief, what's the difference, and this is just to kind of clarify, what's the difference between the three levels of investigations for the use of force?
So, a Level 1 use of force is any force that there's no injury to the individual. It can be resisted handcuffing, something of that sort. There's an injury, that's a Level 2. Of course, or the complaint of injury, it's a Level 2. A Level 3 is serious, where it has serious injury, of course, or officer-involved shootings, are Level 3s.
And one last question, Mr. President. Deputy Chief, compared to the use of force, how many does, how many investigations does Professional Standards have on average a month?
Counsel President, Counselor Champagne, are you asking for the number of investigations per detective?
Yes.
So, currently, our Professional Standards detectives or investigators, they're handling between 10 and 12. Our use of force investigators are handling about five.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Counsel President, no, in fact, it is not mandated by the CASA and it was a decision of this administration and the Department of Justice has made clear that we do not need to have this separate, this department be separate. What was mandated was that we had 25 investigators available to conduct use of force investigations.
Oh, that's under your department? Sorry, my microphone was off.
Counsel President, yes. Both Internal Affairs were under me.
How many homicide detectives do we have in the department?
Counsel President, I'm not sure how many homicide detectives that we have. I can get that information for you, though.
Auto theft detectives, do you know how many total detectives we have in the APD?
Counsel President, no, I'm not sure.
I think, we'll go to Counselor Sanchez, maybe the chief's here, one of his staff, he could help us with that. Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis. You were actually answering that question. I was going to ask City Legal if that was a mandated part of the DOJ. But since we're on a question, is this supposed to be an independent entity kind of looking over lease reform? What's the purpose?
Counsel President, Counsel Sanchez, again, the existence of the Office of Police Reform is not mandated by the CASA, so that's really a question for the administration.
Counsel President, Counselor Sanchez, you know, I think the administration made the decision that it was valuable for us to have the Office of Superintendent Police Reform to be independent of the police department, to give the community a sense of confidence that the superintendent would be acting on these investigations and reviewing for police reforms as the CASA has expected. As we said, it isn't required for the independence, but it was designed to provide that extra layer of independence to ensure that when we have specialist situations that might call for independent review, there's that confidence in that.
Okay, so, you're telling me the mayor works, the police chief works under the mayor and now the independent office works, or the police reform office works under the mayor? What's the difference? There is, it still works, it's still under the mayor's administration. So, I mean, the concept sounds good, but it should be totally independent or make it make some sense in terms of, I mean, you're still underneath the same mayor. I mean, if the, so to me, it's still not an entity that, in totality, that I would think needs to be here. It's still under the mayor's office. I think it should be separate from the mayor's office so that there is no, no, any kind of appearance of impropriety and I think it should be 100% separate. And I think that we should be able to have, set it up like the AGO or one of these other entities where, where somebody from council picks someone, someone from the mayor's office picks someone, and then they pick the third individual to handle reform. To me, that would be more transparent and it would lead to more accountability within, within city government and within the police department.
Mr. President, I just would say that, you know, as the charter is set up for the administration of the, of the city, the police department and the investigations within the police department are within the administration's responsibility. We believe we've set up an arrangement that allows for an appropriate level of independence with the Office of Police Reform. And as we said, we've gone beyond what is expected from the CASA and the DOJ to do so and we believe it is a decision that has been an effective one for supporting our work as we move forward.
What distinguishes, I guess, the Reform Department from, from Internal Affairs? How would you say that distinguishes, you distinguish yourself from them?
Counsel President, Internal Affairs is part of the Office of Superintendent. So, the Office of Superintendent and the Police Reform Bureau, those are interchangeable. Internal Affairs are basically part of the whole Reform Bureau, the Office of Superintendent.
What do you do, though? I mean, we call them, I know it's, one is mostly independent, but what do you do that's different than Internal Affairs?
We are Internal Affairs. So, we handle all misconduct complaints, we investigate all uses of force and any uses of force that arise from, any misconduct complaints that arise from uses of force. We also administer any disciplinary action to anybody in the department and I am the final disciplinary authority for APD.
So, you're Internal Affairs?
Yes, sir.
But you're called Reform. I mean, what, you know, distinguishes you in the area of, what do you do that is in the area of reform that's different than what a Internal Affairs Department would do?
Well, part of our reason, Counsel President, part of the reason we're under the consent decree is that supervision was a huge part of our, our issues with the department. We weren't holding our offices accountable and we weren't being impartial and fair through officers, throughout the whole department. That's why we've created this, this Office of Superintendent to administer discipline fair and impartial and it's consistent throughout the whole department. And that is, is why we've been moving forward with the paragraphs with the CASA.
So, is there, is there an end goal to reform or is this a perpetual project? I mean, just, just the name or the... I mean, just, just the name, or the, the, the word Reform has a, um, a meaning of, at some point, Reform happens, you know? So, do you see yourself as a, uh, is there an end goal, uh, a year from now, two years from now?
Counselor President, I anticipate, um, the Office of Superintendent continuing, and I agree with you, I think Reform needs to have an end goal. Um, when we do get out of the CASA, I believe it should strictly be named the Office of the Superintendent. It will still have Internal Affairs, both Internal Affairs beneath it and a disciplinary review process. Um, but I do believe it should continue, um, because it's allowed the department to reform and to meet the DOJ standards and to move forward. I think right now, we're a much better department than we were.
There'll be a point when the DOJ is gone, there'll be a, a point when the, the CASA is gone, um, but do you see a point where, or a point where the Office of Reform will be done reforming?
Counselor President, I believe, they'll be, this office will continue to be doing this job it's doing. Um, it may not be called Reform, but it will still be doing the same job, because unfortunately, we're still gonna have police misconduct, and we're gonna continue to have uses of force. There's no way to get around for any metropolitan police department to not have uses of force.
Do you see a name change happening at some point? Uh, and maybe everything just kind of goes back into Internal Affairs, and yet we have just a huge, massive, you know, department now. Again, I'm, I'm interested in our, we answering how many homicide detectives we have?
Counselor President, we have sixteen detectives in the homicide unit and two sergeants currently.
Thanks, sir. How, how many total detectives do you have in the department?
In the department? I'm trying to do some quick math, sir.
No problem, have your time.
Mr. President, while he's waiting for that information, I have another question for the administration. Dr. Single? We just heard that, um, that this entity was created in reference to, um, being impartial, fair, and consistent. So, are we saying that we weren't impartial, impartial, fair, and consistent prior to the creation of this entity?
Mr. President, Counselor Sanchez, I don't believe it was a statement about, um, beliefs of or, or classification prior. I think it's about the mission and focus of what the department is supposed to be doing for the, um, as the superintendent of Police Reform Office.
So, they weren't doing, based on what you just said, they weren't doing what they were supposed to be doing prior to?
Mr. President, Mr. Counselor Sanchez, that is not what I said. I said, I believe it was not a statement or a classification of previous, but the intent of what they are meant to do in the role that they have and that were defined to do. And as was stated, you know, and Internal Affairs has been a function, and this was to pull that separately and apart and give this, them the opportunity to do this work independently from the police department chain of command.
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
And Counsel, Counsel President, we have a hundred and fifty-three detectives assigned to the Investigative Bureau.
And, uh, and, and those all include what type of? I mean, you have sixteen homicide, and what is some of the general other?
It includes, um, on the Criminal Investigation Bureau side, it's gonna include homicide, robbery, cold case, missing persons, uh, sex crimes, crimes against children, um, on the Investigative Service Division, it's gonna include our Investigative Service Division, our Gun Violence Suppression Unit, our Gun Violence Reduction Unit, our Narcotics Team, um, our, um, that, our OCU, which is our Organized Crime Unit, our Impact, and our Property Crimes as well.
Yeah. You know, about how many in Narc- Narcotics?
Narcotics, there's eight detectives and one sergeant.
Okay. And you're, are you, in that total amount, are you including the investigators and?
This is not, this is not including professional staff.
Are you shorthanded anywhere?
Um, we have short, short, I mean, if you're actually like where we should be, um, I think we have done a great job of having professional staff. Like you had asked about, uh, auto theft detectives, we have seven and one sergeant, but we also included professional staff to assist with like the bait car operations and that sort of horse. So, we've been able to implement professional staff, just like Superintendent Garcia has stated, where we had lack with, um, some sworn personnel, we've been able to fill it with professional staff to help assist with that.
Would, would you say, though, that you need more investigators?
Um, I, I don't, I mean, we would always love more officers on the department, but right now, we're functioning, and as you can s- heard before, we've been reducing crime, so I think we're at a great place. We could always improve.
Your investigators are not, uh, you're not shorthanded anyway, is what you're saying? Your, your investigators are able to handle everything that's coming before them?
Yes, sir.
You're not shorthanded at all?
Yes, sir.
You're not gonna need any more money this year for?
We would love more money, we would love more equipment, we would love more officers, I can tell you that.
Well, you gotta need them first, right? I mean, you have to make the case that, hey, we need more op-, we need more investigators, right?
Of course, we would always need more officers.
Otherwise, we're not gonna give you money for it.
Of course, we, it's.
Gotcha. Well, thank you, and, and Superintendent, thanks for the, thanks for the presentation as well. Appreciate it. I think we might have more questions. Counselor Champagne.
I'm sorry, just a point of clarification, um, I didn't, you don't, you don't have a gangs unit anymore?
Uh, we have a Gun Violence Suppression Unit, that's where.
Okay.
Yes.
And, and intel?
Yes, we have intel in our Investigative Service, um, our Electronic Support Unit, and we have intel as well. That's some of the units that I, yes, what we do.
Oh, okay, I, I didn't hear that, I apologize. And then, just one point of clarification for, uh, Deputy Chief. When officers are presented with forty hours or above, or eighty hours of discipline, that goes to you and not to the chief anymore?
Counselor President, Counselor Champagne, that's correct, it comes to me.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question about the current investigation for our chief. Is, that's under yours, under the IAPS, the professional side, or not use of force?
Uh, Counsel President, Counsel Rogers, uh, the incident with the chief involves basically two separate channels. Um, one's the crash, it goes before the crash review board, and the other one goes to Internal Affairs. That's the one for a possible OBRD, that's the on-body recording device violation that he self-reported, that is coming to Internal Affairs Professional Standards.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, um, do you think that you're going to do a fair and impartial, um, insistent investigation on the police chief, being that he's been your boss for, uh, many years?
Counsel President, Counselor Sanchez, um, yes, I do. I believe it will be fair, and I will make, I do not make the final decision on the chief's case, that'll go to the CAO, but I will be the first reviewer of that case. Um, but yes, I do believe it would be fair. Unfortunately, I've had to discipline a couple of other deputy chiefs who've been in this position. It's not a very good thing, I don't, I don't like doing that, but it's something that I've had to do.
We heard it here, thank you.
All right, thank you all, appreciate it. Uh, we have the, the other presentation ready to go, Counselor Penya?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, Director Sanchez, I think is here. And I'll turn it over to her. As you all know, we're working on the Route Sixty-Six celebration. We're working on a multifaceted, uh, approach to looking at, um, infrastructure and, and, um, also part of the celebration. So, I think, uh, Director Sanchez is gonna give us a great overview on, on what the progress is so far.
Counsel, Counsel President Lewis, Counselor Penya, thank you so much for this opportunity. We actually have, um, presentation Part A and Part B on the Route Sixty-Six Centennial. Um, I also brought Tanya. To the Route Sixty-Six Celebration in a couple of years. So, I will go ahead and give you a quick overview. Um, we did send out some, uh, information to you via email a couple of weeks ago, and I have most of that reprinted and a little bit updated, um, to send home with you tonight in case, you know, you wanna read it in real life. Okay, let's see. So, I think before we get started, just for people that are watching, I know everyone here is very aware of the Route Sixty-Six Centennial, but in two thousand and twenty-six, the Route Sixty-Six will turn one-hundred officially. This is when it was, um, as the federal charter was in November of, um, well, let's see, when was that? Nineteen twenty-six? Sorry, how to do the math there? Um, so, it'll be turning a hundred years old. That's not exactly when it started in, um, New Mexico, but, uh, it covers eight states, um, starts in Chicago, ends in, um, Santa Monica, I believe, officially. Uh, New Mexico has a very long stretch, and of course, Albuquerque has a very long stretch. We typically refer to it as Central Avenue. Um, the historic Route Sixty-Six goes right through the center of our city, um, all the way from the mountains to the volcanoes, and it's eighteen, I think, point six miles long through the, um, through the center of our city. So, we've been, we started working on this thanks to, um, a lot of encouragement and support from City Council, so thank you so much. We started working on this, um, really with a, a nudge from Counselor Penya in two thousand and twenty-two. So, we've been doing a lot of work. I will say, we are, um, we, we are ahead of a lot of cities in the state, and we're ahead of a lot of states, so we're really proud of this. Um, this is all the departments that are actively involved in, um, preparing for the Route Sixty-Six Centennial. Uh, uh, there's, um, our Public Safety Departments, Planning, Metropolitan redevelopment, Parks and Recreation, Arts and Culture, Transit, and I probably forgot someone. Oh, um, Equity and Inclusion, and, um, Health, the new HHH. And then we have a lot of external partners who have already come on board and are doing active work with us. So, we've got Visit Albuquerque, um, National Parks, National Trust for Historic Preservation, Friends of the Orphan Sign, which is a local nonprofit, Ripe, which is a branding firm, uh, New Mexico, UNM Libraries, UNM College of Fine Arts, and New Mexico Main Street. These are all organizations that we're already, um, actively engaged in terms of projects or funding. In two thousand and twenty-two, we started some community engagement where we did interviews with a lot of stakeholders. These are just some examples, um, and we, we spent about eight months talking to a lot of different organizations and individuals and business owners. And we heard a lot of things, um, and, um, out of that, one of the things that came out of all of those community conversations was putting together a community committee. So, we started meeting with that committee, we meet every other month. It's, um, a very diverse group, it's in your handouts, it shows you everyone who's on that, um, committee right now. Um, very excited, engaged group of business owners, nonprofit leaders, um, neighborhood association, people from UNM, all up and down the corridor. We heard a lot, we've heard a lot of different things about Route Sixty-Six, and, um, some of this is also in your handouts. But I think it's just, what it reminds us is that the community has a lot of different feelings about the past, the present, and also the future of Route Sixty-Six, which means that our efforts really need to be broad, and they need to be, um, diverse and various, and that's what we're really trying to do, um, as, you know, as a, as a citywide effort. So, some people are concerned, they don't want us to just be celebrating the nineteen-fifties version of Route Sixty-Six. Um, some people want us to only celebrate the nineteen-fifties version of Route Sixty-Six. Um, some people only want to be looking forward, some people only want to talk about, um, external visitors and tourists, some people want to talk about housing and all of these things along Central. So, it just reminds us that we really, as a city, and as, um, city leadership and as departments, we need to be looking at all of these pieces together. So, these are just a few of the things that our department is really focused on. Um, you know, we already do a lot of really, um, strong programming along Route Sixty-Six, but as we look forward to the celebration, which we're planning to launch in May of two thousand and twenty-five, because we want to have two full seasons, two full summer and fall seasons of, um, really actively promoted, uh, activities along the corridor. So, you know, a lot of that will be building on things we already have, trying to, um, advertise that more, but also maybe bring in higher-level, um, entertainment and to kind of amplify these celebrations, so they're a real destination for visitors. Um, and then also some new things. We're looking at some augmented reality, um, apps, um, so that people have places to, to go along the route and really appeal to a younger audience, um, using technology in a new way to share the history and the culture and the place. Um, public art, um, some real good partnerships with other arts and cultural nonprofits and businesses. And I think that's one of the things that we are really invested in. We know this is gonna be strong if everyone up and down the corridors is participating. The city itself can't do the level of programming alone. That's going to really make this special. So, we've, that's why we have our community committee, that's why we're working on ways to really partner with businesses, arts and cultural nonprofits, UNM, all of these other places that are along the route, to make sure that a lot is happening in two thousand and twenty-five and twenty-six. Um, we've already started a few historic preservation projects. Um, right now, we're working on a neon, um, like, a kind of history of Albuquerque neon. That's funded by the National Park Service. Um, you know, there's an effort to get Central Avenue Bridge designated as a historic landmark. Um, the Transit Department and the Albuquerque Museum, not a typical partnership, are working together on a collaboration, they've already started on that. Uh, and then we're looking at other partnerships, like the National Trust for Historic Preservation, which is a national organization, um, to do some work in the International District, and then the Albuquerque Museum is working on an exhibit as well. We've got a lot of corridor improvements going on across all of the departments. Um, the Revamp Route Sixty-Six Sign Improvement Project, block-by-block cleaning, International District Library Park is slated to be completed by two thousand and twenty-five, late two thousand and twenty-five, I believe. Um, and then just a lot of other projects, median improvements, code enforcement and compliance, outdoor fire operations, a lot of things, things are already happening, and they will just continue to strengthen over the next couple of years. A lot of this is much more in detail in the written, um, report for all of you. Um, this one, I'm just gonna spend a couple more minutes on this, because this is one of the first projects we started, so this is where we're seeing some first and early success. We did, starting in two thousand and twenty-two, again, thanks to early funding from City Council, we, we did a full inventory of signs, historic signs along Route Sixty-Six. And as a result, um, we really identified some opportunities. We put, we partnered with MRA and, um, took, um, a lot of the money that we had and put it into partnerships with, um, business and property owners. And so, there are about twenty projects that are underway. Um, and one of them is already completed, so this is one of the Imperial sign, the Imperial Motel sign was one of the Revamp Route Sixty-Six grant recipients, and that project is already completed. And, um, the rest of these signs that are listed here, Imperial Inn, Sandia Peak Inn, the Dog House, always a popular one, Arrive Hotel, all of these are, are underway. Most of them already have their signs designed, and so we'll see all of these going up over the next year and a half to two years. I know that you specifically asked about this last week. So, um, Community Safety Department, Albuquerque Community Safety Department, um, has got several initiatives that are really focused on Central Avenue from, um, street outreach and coordinating teams to, um, a new office along the corridor, engagement with local businesses, and, um, outreach and engagement teams. So, they've got a pretty significant effort that they've, that they're standing up along Route Sixty-Six. Um, both MRA and HHH have development projects that are on this Route Sixty-Six corridor. These are all projects that are slated to be completed in the next two years. Um, so, I'm gonna just go, because we've got them in a little bit more detail here. Um, there's Somos at Central, um, these are MRA housing developments, the Sixty-Six at Adams in Central, Nuevo at Trisco, at Central and Unser, the Pearl. Central and Unser, the Pearl, Central near Laguna. These are all projects that are underway and expected to be completed. And HHH also has affordable housing projects that are going on along the corridor. So four projects that we're expecting to see affordable housing in the next two years. And then we're working on, you know, really promoting Route 66 locally, regionally, nationally, and internationally, and I'm not going to go too much into that because we've got Tanya Armenta here to talk about what they're doing, so she'll do a much better job. And then in terms of next steps, we are, we've got our community committee coming together. These are really ambassadors and also people who are actively engaged and participating along Route 66. We'll have our master Route 66 events calendar. We believe that in terms of all the city signature events, that'll be done in terms of choosing dates by May of this year, and then we'll start adding other events from the community as we move through the rest of the year. So by the end of the year, we'll have what we consider to be pretty complete. We're working on a website that will be hosted by Visit ABQ so that it can be there for a while and also so we can push it out to visitors and tourists. We're working on our Albuquerque Neon video series, and we're, we continue to engage new partners and look for other funding sources. We have a couple of grants that we'll be writing in the next couple of months, so in addition to city funding and hopefully partner funding, we'll, we'll hope to bring in some more grant funding as we move forward over the next year and a half. And then we will launch promotions with Visit Albuquerque and others. It is a very fast version of, if you saw the spreadsheet we sent out, of about 65. We're trying to get to 66 because we think it's poetic, and we are arts and culture. So we're trying to get to 66 distinct initiatives for Route 66 Centennial, and there are additional PDFs and information on the spreadsheet we sent you, so if you want to dive deep into something, you can do that. I'm also happy to answer questions to the best of my ability on all of this this evening. Counselor, would you like for me to go ahead and have Tanya present, or would you like to do questions on this part?
Mr. President, yeah. If, if we can have Tanya just make a brief presentation?
Yeah. Yeah, Presentation B.
Mr. President, members of the council, happy to be here this evening and to be partnering with the City of Albuquerque in this important initiative. I am going to move pretty quickly through a promotion to, through some slides, just to share with you what we've been doing to date. Of course, promotion of Route 66 is not something new to us in terms of promoting Albuquerque and what visitors are interested in, but we are looking forward to this really monumental opportunity to share Route 66 with both international and domestic visitors as we move forward. So real quickly, I just wanted, because I do know there's some new counselors, just a reminder of who Visit Albuquerque is, as a private, not-for-profit organization, of course contracted by the city as the official destination marketing organization. And I wanted to just share, our overall mission, of course, is to promote the city as a competitive and world-class leisure convention and meeting and sports destination, and that work does enhance the public image of the city to, as a place to live and work, and provides economic opportunity and prosperity for people in our community. So real quickly, this one has really been a fun, new initiative. I believe you'll know from some of our previous work that we've shared, we have wrapped five light rail system, the trains in Denver. That is not just a one, there's additional advertising in the Denver market, of course, because it's important as a target market. But this was just debuted in February. This is a brand, this is a new train design promoting Route 66, and so you'll see there, celebrating 100 years, we're already starting to promote and build interest in the Centennial with all of the artwork, of course, reminiscent of things that we're very proud of here in Albuquerque. But this, there is a QR code on this train that takes you to a page on our site that tells you more about Route 66 and more about that experience. Again, it's, it's already been very popular in terms of that addition. I don't believe here we'll be able to show you the video, but I do think in your slide presentation, you can see that train being wrapped in terms of there in Denver. We'll share real quickly, just of course, we produced the Albuquerque, Official Albuquerque Visitors Guide, wanted to share, we print 200,000 of those each, each year, and just an example of some of the editorial and photography and promotion that we've been using in the Visitors Guide in terms of Route 66. So those are just some examples. Through our website in terms of promotion, and as Dr. Sanchez mentioned, we will be expanding and building web, overall microsite dedicated to the Centennial in partnership with the City of Albuquerque. Again, outdoor advertising is something that, thanks for the opportunity with some supplemental funding to do more of that in the recent, in the last two years. This is an example, from February to June of this year, that we will be showcasing Route 66-featured outdoor boards in Colorado Springs, Denver, Phoenix, El Paso, Dallas, and Los Angeles. Again, this video, I encourage you to look in your presentation, and this is something that we worked on with co-op advertising money from the State Tourism Office, and is narrated by Mark Baker from 505 Central in terms of Route 66, and it's playing from a digital advertising standpoint for Albuquerque right now and all of, a lot of our digital advertising buys. Media coverage, of course, we have a team dedicated to positive publicity on behalf of the city, and so we have already secured some excellent Route 66 coverage in terms of opportunities to come and visit Albuquerque. One that we're very proud of, New Mexico was ranked the number seven travel adventure by National Geographic this year. There was the top 20 coolest travel adventures for 2024 in New Mexico with a really significant focus on Albuquerque, and it was only one of five domestic destinations listed on that rate ranking. Again, just going to move through some of this, but tremendous media opportunities. The last thing I wanted to point out is that, of course, talked about international tourism and domestic tourism. One of the best ways to do that is through an opportunity through trade shows, and so we will be, we've already been representing Albuquerque in behalf of some of the consumer and industry trade shows, and a really big opportunity with something that's called IPW, it's the U.S. Travel Association's largest international travel trade show. This year, it's in Los Angeles, and 2024 and 2025, it's in Chicago. I think it works out perfectly to promote Route 66 on both ends of the, that adventure. So the Great American Road Trip, iconic road trips, is something that our team is working very deliberately and very diligently on in terms of making sure Albuquerque has an opportunity to share its adventure with, with the world.
Counsel, I'm going to recommend if we have questions for, you know, to reach out to the director, and we'll, we'll kind of move on to our next item. Thank you all so much. Let's move on to admin Q and A. Counselors, any discussion with the admin? Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple of questions regarding some items I saw in the news, regarding the Gateway asbestos lawsuits. And so, first question is, based on the current, recent news coverage that I saw, there were three whistleblowers who claim they were retaliated against because they participated in investigations into asbestos. So again, we've talked a lot about not compromising investigations. I understand if you can't answer that and have to do a closed session around that. But biggest question I have, that I've been getting a lot of calls about, is what happened to the employee or employees who made the decision to ignore the asbestos warning? Are they still with the City of Albuquerque?
Counselor President, Counselor Rogers, I really can't get into details of this, but I can say we would disagree with that characterization that anyone made a choice to ignore asbestos. I think, you know, the administration has said that there were some, some mistakes made, but I just, I wouldn't characterize it that way. We have received that lawsuit. We are reviewing that lawsuit. We generally deny that any retaliatory action was taken against those employees. In fact, we were quite careful when this first arose a year ago to, to protect employees' rights and ensure there was no retaliatory action taken, so we will be defending vigorously these claims. There were some personnel decisions made after, again, a year ago after this first came to light, and I don't really think I can get into any more details than that.
Thank you. Last question, then, hopefully you can answer for the people who called me regarding the list of, how did we decide on the list of people who were potentially exposed? How are they notified, or how did we identify them? And how can people check to see, add themselves to the list? Like, for instance, I've gotten calls from contractors who were in the building during that time that did not get notified. I, as an employee of OEI, was in the building a lot of times during that time, didn't get notified. So how do we add ourselves to that list, or how do public contractors, people who were in the building, how do they add themselves if they feel like they were exposed?
So Counselor President, Counselor Rogers, I'm afraid I'm just, I don't fully remember the process that was used to identify who was in the building. I know there was an extensive amount of outreach done to make that determination. There was a rather extensive list of anyone who had been in the building at any time, and they were mailed notification of the potential for exposure to asbestos, even though we really don't, you know, don't know the specific dates of exposure, so anyone who had been in the building at any time since the city acquired it.
Like our Congresswoman and our Senator Heinrich?
Yes, ma'am.
Those people were notified?
Yes, they were. Or there were, I mean, I don't know, there was a very extensive list of people who were notified. We've, several members of this body received that notice back in May of 2023. But so that, so, but if there were people who believed they were in the building, I don't think that we, you know, did external outreach, or I don't know how much-
Our contractors, at least?
Yes, ma'am. So the contractors were notified. I can guarantee that. I have copies of the notices to the subcontractors who work for the general contractor.
Not just the general-
The employees, each employee.
Okay.
I know that, so. But in terms of, in terms of people adding themselves to the list, people who weren't on that list, because, I mean, we did our best to identify who was in the building, I think we can work out some kind of system that, the process was handled by risk management previously.
Okay, so currently, they should reach out to your office or to risk management?
To risk management.
Okay.
Counselor Baca, then Counselor Basson.
Yeah. Mr. Simon? Ms. McRoberts? Sorry. I thought we were still talking about that. Thank you, Mr. Simon and Ms. McRoberts. I appreciate your time coming out here tonight. As you know, I've been receiving a ton of emails and phone calls in regards to the Bosque and the wildfire mitigation project. I want to start by saying I fully support that project. You know, as you both know, I've spent a good chunk of my career working along the Middle Rio Grande in various capacities. That said, I do share some of the concerns that some of these folks have. As much as I really care about the Rio, I think the Bosque is what people really care about in our community. So I just, just a couple of quick questions. I know I sent a bigger list of questions to both of you, but maybe we can publish those later after this. But one, I just, you know, thinking about, you know, the clearings that ride along Tingly Beach, some of the very first parts were very, very visible to visitors. There's a lot of concerns about that. I also traveled down there, and I saw that outside of that, especially closer to the Hispanic Cultural Center, it looks like it's a lot more, a lot more care was taken in what was, what was done. So I just want to, A, make sure that, you know, from your, from your words, to ensure that that, that practice of a bit more careful is going to continue. And then B, the, the big part is replanting and reseeding. You know, it's, with, with the way the Bosque has changed and climate change and the loss of the hydrograph, which is real, it's, you know, a lot of that native vegetation doesn't, doesn't stick the way it used to, and so I think this is an opportunity for folks to not only hear from you what, what the plan is in a little bit more detail, but also ways for them to, to engage and participate in bringing back our Bosque.
Great. Mr. President, Counselor Baca, thank you so much for your interest in this topic, your deep knowledge of the subject, and, and of course, the council's overall interest and support for the open space program. We really appreciate that. As you, as you, many people know, the, the city Parks Department through the Open Space Division, we manage the Rio Grande Valley State Park through a joint powers agreement with the Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District and through the Rio Grande Valley State Park Act. So it's a, it's a complicated, multi-jurisdictional partnership approach to managing the Bosque. We were very successful in obtaining a FEMA grant through partnership between Albuquerque Fire and Rescue and Parks and Rec Open Space. We obtained this large, nearly $1 million FEMA grant to support a wildfire mitigation project to reduce the severity of catastrophic wildfire, a wildfire, and support overall ecosystem health, forest health, and significantly try to protect the major infrastructure that is along the Bosque, particularly in this area, sensitive and highly used and popular area, the Bosque, it includes the Biopark and the National Hispanic Cultural Center. I want to also thank the council for your support of the project, since it was through the approval of council resolution that we were able to move forward on the project, and also a contract with Ciudad Soil and Water Conservation District, one of our partners in the project. So I have with me today to help answer a couple of your questions, Colleen Lang and McRoberts, who's our Open Space Superintendent. I'll try to address the, the first question you had, Counselor, about what we call the prescription in the Bosque, or it's sort of the guidelines for conducting a forest thinning and fuel reduction project of this nature. So we've completed about 70% of the project. We, we started in two areas. There's 14 different units, really, for this fuel thinning project. Two of the units we started with, one is close to Tingly Beach, the other close to the National Hispanic Cultural Center, and those were among the first units to be treated. So we were literally testing the prescription as we went, and as we saw that on the ground, we were able to then adjust our prescription. So what you see sort of in these couple of units that were treated first in the project is not what you'll see, you know, in the other 12 units. Overall, there was, this is about a 470-acre project area, but within that 470 acres, we're only actually treating about 190 acres, or about 40% or so. So, you know, we're trying to be careful about how we go about that. I think in one of the areas that you may have noticed, you know, we did take out some, some large trees, Siberian elms, which are non-native species, obviously, and that was noticeable, particularly along the bicycle trail near Tingly Beach, whenever you see a large tree come down. You know, one of the reasons, of course, that occurred was, again, fire protection, but most of you know, if you have a Siberian elm in your yard or in your neighbor's yard, they're quite prolific seed producers. That and cottonwoods produce these storms, you know, of seeds in the early summer. So when we, when we took out, made the decision to take out some of those larger trees, it's really because we don't want to have the area reseeded again with non-native Siberian elms. But we've adjusted our prescription in the other units, so we're preserving a few more, like stems, you know, trees, mostly native species in those areas. So that's why units, Unit 5 and one of the other units, looks a little bit different, but we've adapted, we're moving forward with as sensitive a prescription as we can in the other units. With the focus, again, on reducing and eliminating non-native species, as they tend to make the Bosque more fire-prone, and of course, a major disturbance such as a wildfire is a very, very bad thing for wildlife habitat also in the Bosque. A major disturbance like that sets the Bosque back, and it's almost impossible to recover, except over a long period of time, to recover the native species. So, and recovery, really, and restoration is the goal in addition to the wildfire reduction. And to talk about the plans for restoration, I'd like to have Superintendent Lang and address that for you.
Mr. Baca, this, or Counselor Baca, this is fine. I know he, the counselor has other questions. We've already had about an hour of presentations tonight, and this has already turned into about another 10-minute presentation. Do you have some specific questions?
I think we just had one question which we can address, is the restoration question.
Okay, all right, thank you.
President and Counselors, Counselor Baca, thank you for the opportunity to just provide some additional context. I'll make it brief. I do want to explain that at this point, we only have about two more weeks maxed while we're just doing the rest of the tree felling, and then the work that you're going to see is just removing the downed wood and the mulch, and that will be completed before the migratory bird nesting season. That's been, one of the reasons we've been speeding up this project is to meet the grant deadline, as well as the migratory bird nesting season, to limit our impact. We've been working with four crews doing- And then the work that you're going to see is just removing the downed wood and the mulch, and that will be completed before the migratory bird nesting season. That's been, one of the reasons we've been speeding up this project is to meet the grant deadline, as well as the migratory bird nesting season, to limit our impact. We've been working with four crews doing this work simultaneously, so I know it's been a lot all at once. Our next phase is going to be developing a short- and long-term restoration action plan. The short-term plan is already completed, pretty much, and that is looking at a six-month timeframe from February to August. And then the long-term plan will be more of a two-year timeframe. So during that, the short-term plan will be doing things like closing off social trails that were created from the equipment, getting our ancestral lands crew out there to reestablish the trails. We'll be doing a number of plantings, you know, some pole plantings where we're close to the water table, utilizing some tall pots, looking at how to incorporate OAS for water availability for more drought-resistant species on the higher slopes. And, and then we're working with a great group of people to develop a long-term plan, a committee that will help to provide input, including the Bird Alliance, the Bosque Ecosystem Monitoring Program, Interstate Stream Commission, many partners are at the table with us in developing the long-term plan. We'll be making those available to the public on the website that we have for the current project. And there's going to be plenty of volunteer opportunities. We've already been employing volunteers during this regular time. We do pole plantings. We have a couple of projects in this area with youth crews and community members. In addition to that, we'll have some big events coming up. One in May that's going to be more education-focused, followed by a one later in May for our national river cleanup. So lots of opportunities for the, for the public to learn more and to volunteer, and we'll make all of that information available to the public.
Thank you. You send all that to me so I can share it out. And the other questions I had lined up, I can, I can share those out later. So I appreciate your time, thank you. Appreciate the time, Mr. President. I think the Bosque is one of those jewels, unique jewels that we have here in Albuquerque. I mean, it's, I think people don't realize just how different it is to have a living river running through your city, whereas most cities just have canals running through. So thank you for your time.
It is changing, so we're trying to change with it, but thank you very much.
Counselor Basson, Counselor Champagne.
Mr. President, my question is for the administration on some other topic.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. A couple of weeks ago, I wasn't present in person, and I meant to ask this question, and then I want to make sure to circle back. What makes our country so great is our ability to have freedom of speech. What makes Albuquerque so beautiful is the diversity of culture and opinions. What is the administration doing and what is, is there a plan so that when there are protests, protesters are not necessarily allowed to get right next to other people who might be going about something completely irrelevant to what, what the topic of the protest may be? You know, a few years ago, there was the whole Onyate statue, and then we've had some recent things happening with some heated protests in Albuquerque. And I just want to know what the administration's take is on making sure that, you know, while we can have this diversity and, and the privilege and the right that we have with the Constitution, that we're also making sure that there's not that overstep. And so I'd love to hear what we're, what we're doing to be proactive about that.
Counselor President and Counselor Basson, thank you for the question. And, you know, I know for, I know for that we've recently had several instances in which we've had folks interested in protesting at large public events. The convention center oftentimes becomes a place where folks want to do so. And I know that when we recently had a very large event at the convention center, expecting, you know, more than 1,000 people at the event, we worked to put in place a plan that was related to, to ensure that individuals had the right and the place to protest and to be heard, and to ensure that folks felt safe as they entered the building. I think that was well-planned between metro security, APD, private security, and other entities that would be related, or I'm sorry, located within the jurisdiction as well. And I think it was, it was coordinated well. What I can't tell you is exactly how that plan was planned out, but I'd be happy to bring that back and share that with you so that we can speak to the detail that went into that. I think it was done as well in the most recent time I was there. And, and I know that in preparation of that event, we had multiple meetings to coordinate and ensure that we were providing the location on Civic Plaza for protest and to allow people to access. And I think it was actually in response to a previous arrangement not being as well planned. And so I think we can bring to you what our, our current strategy is.
Mr. President, and thank you. And, you know, I don't need to know the specific ins and outs. I just definitely think that it's important for people to know that they absolutely can protest, they can express their right to freedom of speech. But they should not do it necessarily if we can make sure to help out where possible at city events or large gatherings that the city knows within arms' reach of one another. I don't think that that's going to be a recipe for success for anyone. So I am glad to hear that the administration does do something to make sure that, that we can try our best to accommodate both sides of the spectrum on that. But arms' reach seems to be a recipe for disaster when it comes to, to something like that.
Absolutely. Counselor President and Counselor Basson, I think it's also just important to know that we're always monitoring the situation to ensure that at any time, we understand when folks want to, are planning to exercise their right to protest so that we can support both the safety of the protesters and the individuals that they may be nearby or adjacent to. And so I do see the, the ongoing monitoring to ensure that we're doing that support as well.
Counsel Champagne, then Counselor Grout.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of questions for the administration. As a new Counselor, I'm trying to stay in communication with my constituents. So I am able to grab a couple of questions each week or during the, between meetings and ask them that are asked of me. So please bear with me. We might be all over the spectrum on this one. So, the turf at Gladiator Stadium. It was in, it was paid for by our taxpayers' money and installed in Rio Rancho, or city money installed in Rio Rancho, and I believe that it's been returned back to the city. Somebody's asking about where the, where it is now and what it's being used for.
Counselor President, Counselor Champagne, that turf has been returned back to Albuquerque. It is currently at Expo New Mexico. Installed, it, it gets put down and gets taken up. Even at Rio Rancho, it was put down for events and pulled up for events. So it's not installed like a carpet, I just want to make that clear. But it has been returned to Albuquerque. It's at Expo New Mexico, awaiting, you know, a new season of the Gladiators.
So it will be returned back to Rio Rancho, then?
Counselor President and Counselor Champagne, no. We expect Expo New Mexico and the Gladiators to work out an agreement for the Gladiators to practice back at Expo, or to play at Expo New Mexico, which was the original intent of that. But the pandemic had, the pandemic and some construction going on at Tingly made it impossible for them to play there. So that's when we, that's why it ended up in Rio Rancho.
Okay. Question two, Mr. President, the asbestos Gateway Center story. What has, and maybe you can't answer this because it has to do with legalities as far as what our exposure is, and it's a little too early to know exactly. But as far as the lawsuits, what our exposure is, is the city. But what, how is the progress going with the actual cleanup now that we have the, the right team in there to do it?
Mr. President, Counselor Champagne, sorry, I just checked to make sure I was allowed to answer before I answered.
No, I know, it's a delicate ballet.
So since this, we have developed a absolute protocol within the city to ensure that any time any project is going to touch a building that is of a certain age or would potentially have, any potential for asbestos, we have a protocol that includes now our Director of DMD, Jennifer Turner's engagement. We do have, we follow that protocol. So each one of the projects within the Gibson Health Hub or the Gateway has that protocol engaged for cleanup related to asbestos or any other matter that we would need to be considering in each project. So as we start a project for construction or renovation, the asbestos issues related to that, the assessment and the cleanup happens with each one of those package, of those. So we do not go into any area of the building and disturb that part of the building without doing an assessment in advance to ensure that we are not putting anyone in any exposure. We use a contractor to do that work that is essentially a certified asbestos assessment. There are a couple of companies in town. We, we use whichever one is appropriate or available, to be honest, to ensure that we meet those requirements and do that on each project.
Okay. And only two more questions. I promised to be quick, I apologize. The current DWI investigation, what's the likelihood of that extending? Does the administration know the likelihood of that extending the DOJ's presence? Any longer than, I mean, we're talking about the paragraphs and how close we were at a percentage rate, and then has it dropped it from 94 to 82 or whatever it may be?
Counselor President, Counselor Champagne, we do not expect the DWI investigation to affect the length of the CASA. We are, I think, as you know, we hit 94% compliance in the fall. We expect a similar rating in the spring. We have had discussions with DOJ about how to wrap up and end this process, and they have not indicated, or they have actually indicated that the DWI investigation, they do not expect it to affect that timeline in any way.
Okay. And last question, this, I think is more directed toward the Police Department, if I could. I think they do the criteria of what I'm going to ask.
If you don't mind asking, we know which one, I guess Mike's coming down.
Mike, Mike will probably know. I'll start it because I'm on, you can hear me as I'm coming up to save time. But just out of curiosity, SIG alerts, that's a significant event that's emailed out. Is there a criteria to, that you know of, that determines this is enough? And I'll tell you all the details of what it is, and this is more of mine. During last month, I received 478 SIG alerts, during which I read, I started trying to keep up with them and read them and paying attention to the ones involved in my district. But then reading the notes, it's, it's, you know, subject was stopped and found to have a warrant or, you know, arrested without incident, and that's a SIG alert that I get. Out of 470 emails, what's the criteria that these are being sent out?
Counselor President, Counselor Champagne, there is amount, significant amount of SIG alerts that do go out. They're for felony arrests. We have, a lot of them also play into part into some investigations, and then, of course, some operations. Like currently, we have an operation with a warrant backlog. So I have instructed to have any felony warrant arrest to be documented so that I can keep track of all of those individuals on the, that we're arresting on a daily basis. So it's more of a tracking purposes. But yes, they are significant and they do take a long time. As you know, years ago, we had about the same amount. You know, when we started making a large push for a lot of arrests, we wanted to document those because a lot of times, that communications between divisions, if the field arrests someone and they advise, they find out that there's officers, field officers, that arrested their target. So now they're in communications of, okay, now I need to interview him, what information, that sort of thing. So it's a lot of, has to do with a lot of communication throughout the divisions and officers.
Okay. All right, yeah, like I said, when just reading the details, I'm like, without significant.
I read them too, so there's a lot.
Okay, so, okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Grout, I'm going onto the journal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of questions for the administration. How many vacancies do we have? You know, cities always looking for employees. How many vacancies do we have throughout the city?
Mr. President, Counselor Grout, I don't know the answer to that. We have a significant number of vacancies in the city right now, in the hundreds.
Okay. Do we use a staffing company?
Mr. President, Counselor Grout, we do use the support from staffing companies as well as recruiters when, when necessary, when we're having significant issues. We also use other strategies for recruitment and work with our partners throughout the city, actually without, throughout the region, to work to hold hiring events.
Thank you. When was the last time we did have a staffing company on contract to help us find?
Counselor President, Counselor Grout, Kevin, our CFO, just answered for me, thank you. But we do have staffing agencies on contract now.
You do? Okay, good. Because I was asking around because we do have a lot of vacancies. And like you said, they're in the hundreds. And sometimes, it seems like it takes a long time to get a lot of things done. And the excuse I hear often is, we don't have enough staff. So I'm wondering, I know that staffing companies are successful in finding, recruiting for us. And in years past, we have had people on staff, or, you know, on, on contract. And I'd really like to encourage us to look at that again because we need to get, I don't like hearing the excuse, well, I don't have, we're not staffed enough. I don't think that's a good excuse. So I would encourage you all to do that. My next couple of questions, they have to do with Los Altos Park. I've had a lot of people reach out and ask, when can we use Los Altos Park again? It's always closed. So can you answer that for me?
Mr. President, Counselor Grout, I'd like to invite Dave Simon to come up. I think he can give you all the exact information about Los Altos. I could re-paraphrase, but he will be exact for you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Counselor Grout, we're very excited to be looking toward the reopening of Los Altos Park here in March. You know, it'll commence the standard softball season, which begins in March with the spring league. So right now, we've been allowing the field and the park mostly to rest and set, grow in, and protect that big investment we have made. And once we move back into full softball season, the park is going to be open a lot more. So we're very excited about the year coming.
Thank you. Meaning that people can just go by and find a tree and sit underneath it?
Yeah, when the park is open, the park will be, you know, fully open. Where, of course, we're going to manage Los Altos Park, Counselor, differently than it used to be. We want to make sure we protect our investment there. So we will have periods of time when the park will be open, and periods of time when it can be closed. And that is a great benefit to us when we can say, when the park is open, come on in, and when it's closed, we would prefer you use another park.
Yes.
But we'll be, you know, moving forward with a very, very busy season, starting just as soon as softball resumes here in a few short weeks.
Thank you. I know a lot of people will be excited about that. Then my final couple of questions have to do with the tournaments that are at the park. I understand that there are softball or softball and baseball tournaments, and I don't know, you know, all of that. But there are fees that are, are associated with these tournaments. So my question is, the fees that are, that are incurred, do, does that income go into the general fund, or does it go back into the parks fund?
Mr. President, Counselor Grout, Los Altos Park is principally a softball facility, not a baseball facility.
Thank you.
We have another great facility for that, which is out on the, on the west side. The fees that accompany tournament use of the park would return to the general fund.
Is there, thank you. Is there a reason why it goes into the general fund and not back into parks?
It's, Kevin, you want to take that one, or it's more common practice?
Yes, Counselor President and Counselor Grout. As you know, we come before you every year for appropriations. Everything has to be appropriated, so whether it went into parks or whether it went back to general fund, we come back to you for every penny of revenue. Everything that we bring in, we come back to you for an appropriation to expend. So it's really six of one or half a dozen of another. That money goes into the general fund and we request appropriations back out, so.
Thank you. So thank you. And so that, follow-up to that, then, I might have to explain it a little bit to me. So with that analogy that you just shared, when we get fees from planning for permitting and so forth, does that go into the general fund too, or does it go back into the planning department?
Counselor President, Counselor Grout, you will see during our budget process this year that that money does go to the general fund. And then we ask for it to be re-appropriated. And we, we educate counsel, we're happy to educate counsel. We educate our directors all the time. Just because you're bringing revenue in doesn't mean that you can spend it. We have to bring it back to this body to appropriate it.
So do we, do we track the funds that go, that are being brought in, that income brought in from parks? Is that all light items?
Counselor President, Counselor Grout, absolutely. We have revenue accounts, we track revenue, we have expenditure accounts, we track. We track revenue. We have expenditure accounts. We track expenditures, and we've got a fair amount of detail.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you all.
Counsel Sanchez, is there a question?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a follow-up question to Counselor Champagne's Gladiator question. Question's, it's real quick. Who determines which team uses the Gladiator turf, or the turf? I don't think it's just one person, right? It's a city's turf, so multiple people should be able to use it, correct?
Counsel President, Counselor Sanchez, yes, that was part of the agreement originally as well with Rio Rancho, that they had to allow others to be able to use the turf. And that is our arrangement with Expo New Mexico. There are, they do have to make that turf available, and if someone wants to use that turf, they would make arrangements with Expo New Mexico to set up and use that turf on-site.
Reason I was asking is, I saw some pictures, photos this weekend in reference to the New Mexico Runner soccer team, and it didn't look like a new turf that they were using. So if you can check with that and make sure that it's being utilized properly, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I'll go to the Journal. Counsel Grouse.
I move approval of the Journal.
The motion in the second by Counsel Hassan, those in favor, say yes and raise your hand. Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item six is Communication and Introductions. Any changes to the letter of introduction? I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC sixty-six on tonight's agenda for final action. EC sixty-six, approval of the Risk Second Supplemental Agreement to add funds for outside council legal services between Holland and Hart LLP and the City of Albuquerque. Need two-thirds vote, so. The motion in second by Counsel Grouse, any discussion? Those in favor, say yes, raise your hand. Those opposed, no. Motion passes. I move the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC seventy-one on tonight's agenda for final action. EC seventy-one is the mayor's appointment of Mr. Brian C. Patterson of the Impact Fee Committee. The motion been seconded by Counsel Hassan. Those in favor, say yes, raise your hand. Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Counsel Sanchez.
Move that tonight's rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R twenty-three on tonight's agenda for action. R twenty-three is amending the official list of city council meetings from January twenty twenty-four through December twenty twenty-four.
Moved in second by Counsel Grouse. Counsel, any discussion? The motion is made in second, and those in favor, say yes, raise your hand. Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Counsel Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R twenty-four on tonight's agenda for action. R twenty-four is directing the city administration to request a multi-agency investigation of the February seventeenth, twenty twenty-four incident involving Chief Police Terrell Medina.
That's been moved in second by Counsel Champagne. Counsel, any questions, discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes. Those opposed, no. Motion passes.
Mr. President, I move approval of the letter of introduction.
The motion is seconded by Counsel Rogers. And so approval of the letter, it's been moved in second. Those in favor, say yes, raise your hand. Those opposed, no. Motion passes. We're going to go to, no reports of committees. We'll go to deferrals and withdrawals. Counselors, any deferrals or withdraws at this time? There are none. We're going to go on to the consent agenda. Any changes to the consent agenda? So for the individuals on tonight's consent agenda who are being appointed to serve on a board or commission, we want to thank you for your willingness to serve. Thank you, Counsel Grouse.
Mr. President, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion in second by Counsel Champagne. Any discussion, question? Those are, those in favor, say yes, raise your hand. Those opposed, no. Motion passes. We go to announcements. Counsel Hassan.
Mr. President, there will be an intergovernmental Legislative Relations Committee meeting on Wednesday, March sixth, at three P M via Zoom video conference. And there will be a Committee on Guidelines for Negotiations meeting on Thursday, March seventh, at nine A M via Zoom video conference.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a Finance and Government Operations Committee meeting on Monday, March eleventh, at five P M via Zoom video conference.
Right back to Counsel Hassan.
Mr. President, there will be a Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on Wednesday, March thirteenth, at five P M in the Vincent E. Griego Chambers, basement level of the Albuquerque Government Center. This will be a hybrid meeting, and if you didn't know, that's in this room.
All right, thank you. We, financial instruments, there's no report tonight. Item eleven is appeals. Item A is AC twenty-three twenty. This is Albuquerque Land Use Consulting LLC, Carl Garcia agent for Lance Kilgore, appeals the Environmental Planning Commission decision to deny his zoning map amendment from R one D to M X T for all the portion of Lot twenty-seven, Lot three, Unit thirteen. I'm not going to read the rest of that. Ms. Ronke, would you like to start?
Thank you, Mr. President. The issue in this appeal is whether a zone change from R one D, which is residential, to M X T, which is mixed-use transition, should be approved for a one-point-six acre site located at Rainbow Boulevard Northwest and Rosa Parks Road Northwest. The EPC denied the request for a zone change, finding that the requested M X T's, M X T zone's purpose of serving as a transition between residential and commercial uses makes it an inappropriate zone in this area comprised of only residential zones, and that the M X T zone would create an unjustified spot zone that does not reinforce or facilitate implementation of the comp plan. The property owners appealed the EPC's denial, and this was referred to the Land Use Hearing Officer, who recommends that the council deny the appeal and uphold the EPC's decision to deny the zone change. The Lajo specifically found that the area is comprised of residential zones, R one D and R M L, so introducing the requested M X T zone as a transition is inappropriate because M X T is intended to function as a transition between residential zones and more intense commercial areas. Here, there are no more intense commercial areas because the existing zone districts in the area are all residential. In fact, the M X T zone itself would introduce more intense uses, which would contravene the purpose of a transition zone, which is to protect residential zones from more intense uses. The Lajo also agreed that the requested M X T zone would create an unjustified spot zone in a designated area of consistency. M X T zone is incompatible with the area which is intended for predominantly large lot, single-family residential uses. The Lajo found the EPC appropriately denied the zone change and recommends that the council deny the appeal and uphold the EPC's decision. And this is an accept or reject proceeding tonight, so we won't hear from any of the parties, but I'll do my best to answer any questions that you may have. As a reminder, your options tonight are to accept the Lajo's recommendation and findings, accept the recommendation but adopt different findings, or reject the Lajo recommendation and findings, in which case the council will hold a full hearing on this matter at our next meeting.
All right, Counselors, any questions for our staff, or discussion, or recommendations? Counsel Hassan.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to accept the Lajo recommendation and findings.
So that's been moved and seconded by Counsel Hassan, seconded by Counsel Grouse. I guess one question, are we, is it in the record, wasn't sort of clearly in the record as far as the intended use, specific use of the property?
The, Mr. President, the applicants testify, or, in the record noted that they intend to put a wireless telecommunications facility on the site. However, just as a reminder, when the zone change is applied to a parcel, they, that opens up all of the land uses that are available for that zone. So even if they intend to do one thing, that doesn't mean that they're prohibited from the other uses that would be available to them in that zone.
And your understanding, the applicants had, you know, plenty of opportunity during the EPC meetings to explain their, their application, and much discussion with the EPC regarding that?
Mr. President, that's correct. There was no allegation that they were stifled in their discussion with the EPC, or that they didn't have an opportunity to go through that discussion at that stage.
Right. I mean, and my tendency would be to, you know, maybe recommend a full hearing on this, but I think because of that, I think the parties had plenty of opportunity to be able to explain their case, and much deliberation of the EPC. You know, I think I'll agree with the recommendation. So Counselors, any other discussion, or any other recommendations? All right, the, the motion to accept the Lajo recommendation is finding, and findings has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say yes and raise your hand. Those opposed, no. That motion passes. Going to go down to general public comments. Members of the public can provide live public comments to the council in person, or virtually if they've signed up for public comment for the instructions published on the agenda on our website on Fridays. Here's the public comment ground rules. Each participant has two minutes to present. Comments are to be addressed to the counselors only through the council president. Any disruptive conduct will result in removal from the meeting. There's a two-minute time limit. Bell's going to ring to indicate your time is up. Mr. Cornelius, if you'd call the first speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our first speaker is Francesco Artist, followed by Tyler Richter.
Thank you for the Black History Month, and the Let Me Go Dance Your Presentation. Really great energy in the room. Maybe to keep the party going, you all could start giving cold hard cash to the people sitting in the audience, like the Water Authority. It would be a great way to publicly recognize great people who work for the city, who go above and beyond the call of duty. Mr. Cornelius, if I can please get the overhead. Thank you, sir. Speaking of above and beyond, while we're standing in this chamber, we can't talk about Albuquerque. We can't talk about Black history and not say the word Nicole Rogers. It is such an honor to be standing before this city council, the first in American history of our beautiful city to have, to have the first African-American woman to be elected to city council, the governing body of Albuquerque. It is a pleasure to stand before you, Counsel Rogers, and to say, thank you for your willingness to serve. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counsel opinion.
Just once again, I just want to thank you for this. This is a beautiful picture of Counsel Rogers, but then again, you had given us this, this Route sixty-six. You're just such a phenomenal artist. So thank you again, Francesco.
That really, really great work. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Tyler Richter, followed by Antoinette Suena.
Evening, Counselors. My name is Tyler Richter. I am here as a resident of District Seven in the Pueblo Alto neighborhood. I serve my community in a couple of ways. I'm the president of the Pueblo Alto Neighborhood Association. I'm also the co-chair of our Southeast Policing Council, Community Policing Council. Tonight, I'm here to speak in favor of Bill O twenty-four dash one. I guess the order got messed up. Some of my neighbors are going to speak to you more specifically about one homeowner in a neighborhood that has been a nuisance property. I believe that the bill O twenty-four dash one will allow the residents of Albuquerque to aid in the moving of nuisance properties, from nuisance properties to for sale lots. Let's see. As a president of Pueblo Alto and, and my neighborhood, I currently have a uninhabited home across the street from my house. It's been uninhabited for twenty years. There's been much, much outreach to the homeowners and the banks that own the home. It is currently attracting unhoused tenants, and it recently been tagged by the City of Albuquerque. But for homes to take twenty years to be demolished and taken out of a nuisance situation is entirely too long, and so I speak in favor of Bill O twenty-four dash one. Thank you.
Antoinette Suena, followed by Ariana Suena.
Mr. President, council members, thank you. Oh, sorry. I'm shorter, so I thought. Thank you for allowing us to be here today to speak. My daughter and I are here today because we want to bring to your attention an accident caused by an A P D officer on April seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. We were making a left-hand turn through the intersection when he teed on the back of my car where my kids were seated. This was during quitting time traffic as the officer traveled eighty miles an hour in a forty-mile zone, killing my six-year-old son and critically injuring my daughter, who was nine at the time. She stands here with me today. We spent that month in the hospital as she laid fractured from head to toe with a traumatic brain injury. The officer who hit us had six prior accidents, ours being his seventh. Not only was he called off the call, but he chose to dispatch himself out to the call, to a call that was already resolved. In light of the latest car crash incident, it is concerning whether the driving simulator that we donated to the City of Albuquerque and A P D is even being utilized for training, and what measures A P D are putting in place, once again, to prevent these types of accidents from continuing to happen. It's deeply troubling that those in elected positions praise such actions as it disregards potential loss of innocent lives through reckless choices. First responders, and especially those in leadership roles, must be held at a higher standard and need, and should be held accountable for their actions, not rewarded for neglected, neglectful behavior. The recent crash with the police chief reflects a lack of regard for public safety, as he had no due regard for the public at large. My son, Anthony, would have been thirteen years old this year. Instead of celebrating milestones and attending school activities in his sports games, we stand here to be his voice to see change. My daughter would also like to speak.
Ariana Suena, followed by Sue Flint.
Hello, and thank you for having me here this evening. My name is Ariana. I'm sixteen years old and the older sister of Anthony, who at such a young age was robbed of his life due to the hands of a reckless driver. Not only was the life of my little brother taken, but I was also left in critical condition. My question is, how many innocent lives need to be taken, and how many more critical conditions need to be seen due to the recklessness and carelessness of those who have the role to serve and protect? While accidents do happen, accountability must be upheld, which is something that some of our officers who have been at fault lack. When these accidents are caused by officers who are breaking protocol, carelessly causing accidents that could easily be prevented, they need to be held at a higher responsibility for their role that they play. As a new driver, I shouldn't have to be troubled by the thought of being harmed by one of our officers while being on the road. When we think of the title, police officer, we are supposed to have a sense of reassurance that they're going to keep us safe. I'm here today to shed light on the fact that many of these types of accidents are reoccurring and need to stop. When something isn't working, change should take place. When officers make the decision to take their role, they are held at a higher standard because they are taking the role to be one of our leaders. But who's leading them? When they don't have a person in command who is leading by good example, that's when protocols get broken and these types of tragic incidents happen. From our accident, we wanted to help stop things like this happening by donating a driving simulator, which is supposed to help police officers prevent accidents like this. What's the point of having all these trainings and precautions if they aren't being utilized or taken seriously? My brother's death will not be in vain, and those types of fatalities should be the reason why our officers want to do better. I hope that change will happen so that another family doesn't have to suffer from the detrimental actions of these officers. Thank you.
We're so sorry for your loss and all that your family has experienced and been through, and thank you so much for coming here tonight and for talking. Counsel Sanchez, I think, has comments.
Thank you, ma'am, for coming here. This really touched all of us. I, I'm so sorry for your loss, and so sorry for that you have to deal with all your injuries. And thank you so much for coming here and sharing this devastation that you have been going through. I just break my heart. The question that I have for the administration is, is this driving simulator being utilized every single day by the officers of the Police Department? It sounds to me, and you can just make sure that I'm right on this, it sounds to me that there was probably a lawsuit. You use that lawsuit money, return that money to help. to help law enforcement officers not be involved in a situation like this. And here we are in another one. I just need to know if everyone is using that simulator, and I would also like to know if our chief has used that simulator and when.
Mr. President, Counselor Sanchez, so I'm aware that we have the simulator, and I will get you an answer to that as far as if it's been through training. I know we do what's called mandatory training referrals or anything that's outside of, you know, if there's an accident or because there's a crash review board that happens. And the results of those crash review boards, officers are mandated to go to training. But I'll get you a definitive answer. And again, I'm sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Mr. President, so am I understanding that it's only being used during referrals, crash referrals?
No, sir. Like I said, it's at the academy. And so where it's at, so I'm not sure how it's being utilized. I don't oversee the academy and training, but I'll get you those answers.
Thank you. If you can have those for us ASAP, if you could send them to my email, I'd really appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Rogers.
In that information, Deputy Commander, before you go, could we also get the most recent crash review board reports of how much this is happening in APD?
Yes, ma'am. Would you like the total amount of crashes involving APD personnel? Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. And thank you all again.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming down.
Up next, we have Sue Flint, followed by Janice Herrera.
Evening. May I have the viewer, please? The view. Thank you. As I said last time, my name is Sue Flint. I live in a community called Sun North Estates. We're a manufacturer, home community of real property, homeowner-owned, single-family. And I'm here tonight, of course, I'm not for NAYA, so that's my main objective. But back years ago, I sent an email to then Senator Tim Keller, and it was about the city coming in and violating our deeds that had covenants. And he sent me an email telling me that the state of New Mexico cannot legally declare those contracts, i.e., your deeds and covenants, null or changed them. However, that's exactly what they did. And, you know, it's all public records. This right here is R-09263 that Debbie O'Malley had. CAO then, David Campbell submitted the wrong comprehensive zoning code, SU-1-MH Park, into this to the city planner Chris Hyer. We are not a mobile home park. We've never been a mobile home park. We're in SU-1-MH Park. It's not us. We're in SU-1. And so this here is the map of Ronbo Hannan that was used in the R-1111. And he's about the only person with Jim Stroger who used that R-09263, a mobile home parks and communities as mine. Now, you've passed his R-043, and that was what I spoke about last time, which was against the Dillon Rule. And it is not the Home Rule that you should use because there's a distinction between property taxes and personal taxes, and that's why the state of New Mexico recognizes it. Thank you.
Thank you for not yelling at me last time for talking over.
Janice Herrera, followed by Anami Das.
Good evening, Council President Lewis and members of the council. Tonight, I'm here to speak with you as a health promotion specialist at the Health Equity Council in service of public health and equitable outcomes in Bernalillo County. At HEC, I work under the Public Health Initiative grant for which our contract with the Health, Housing and Homelessness Department includes some upcoming deliverables. Since there are some relatively new members on the council, welcome again. I would like to offer you a preview of what to expect. Each quarter, PHI staff at HEC prepare at least three one-page policy papers focusing on current public health issues that intersect with equity, including recommendations for programs and interventions for your review. This quarter, our team have compiled four policy one-pagers as follows. Health and access to public restrooms, a path to cleaner water, syphilis in Bernalillo County, and urban pharmacy desert, the International District. I hope that each of you find the analysis helpful when these reach your desks. We are also currently updating the community health profile for 2024, a data summary that reflects the health of our community using the latest information from epidemiology. I would like to praise my colleagues at HEC for their dedication and lens for equity. I also want to give kudos to city staff who let support and expertise, especially around ArcGIS mapping. This includes Tyber Casuce, Driovinto, and Maria Gallegos from the Environmental Health Department. My heartfelt thanks to ArcGIS expert and HEC volunteer Michael Petula on loan from SWCA Environmental Consultants. Finally, also a shout out to my counselor Joaquin Baca and Councilwoman Nicole Rogers. Thanks for coming to Transit Equity Day at the Alvarado Transit Center. I hope to see more of you all at community events soon. I do appreciate your time this evening and wish you all a good night. Thanks.
Anami Das, followed by Tad Numinski. Anami Das, followed by Tad Numinski.
Thank you. My name is Tad Numinski. I have a hard time to hear myself without. Anyway, Route 66, history. Route 66, I remember, '69, started, you know, have you heard of it? Started at Tremway Road. That was road, dirt road up and down. No housing until you get to your bank. So anyway, what about now? Of course, through downtown, historic. Rest of it is basically gone. Except, thanks to the city. Now, let me move on. From Tremway, going to Wyoming. Reminds me now, another building tagged by nuisance basement. With funds, fines, every day, fined $1,500. So, so where is, what about neighborhood? Where is neighborhood? City cleanup downtown area and other areas. Look at Trembo neighborhood, south between San Pedro and Wyoming. All these alleys and nearby streets. Where is this who protects and serves? Where they are, council robbers? Maybe we can meet, I would like to meet for half hour this coming week, then take a tour. Thank you.
Anami Das, followed by John Major.
Hi, y'all. My name's Anami. I'm the chair of the Human Rights Board. I wanted to present a copy of R-24-1, the homeless rights resolution that the board passed at our last meeting. However, I saw Gil in the hallway and I got excited and I handed him my own copy. So I would encourage all of y'all to look at that resolution. It's on CABQ.gov. And, yeah, I think that's it. Cool. Thanks.
John Major, followed by Rudolph Serrano.
Mr. President, counsel, thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank each of you for your service, more important than you may realize. I came here to express a concern over the conduct of the investigation into Chief Medina immediately proceeding and including his crash on February 17, I believe. Although it's hard to imagine a more compelling argument or call for police accountability than what we just heard. Repeat actions, lack of reform, lack of accountability. We've also heard that the Office of Independent, or I'm sorry, Internal Affairs is not subject to the chief of police, answers to the mayor. Although it was Chief Medina who stated to the press that the Albuquerque City Police Department Motors Unit would investigate his crash and Internal Affairs would conduct investigations into his policy or potential policy violations. It gives the appearance that they do answer to him. It certainly sounds like we will be using sworn officers to gather evidence, testimony, and draw conclusions about his conduct, the cause and results of the crash. The conduct or the assessment of appropriate police conduct, it is under the purview of the executive branch to review that. Ultimately, it's often decided in legislative and judicial. We cannot expect the police to police themselves without oversight. I would ask that the legislative, the council here today, exercise oversight. I'm not drawing conclusions on the results of the investigation. I'm making sure that we make, we remove any apparent cause, right? Any obvious conflict of interest in who conducts the investigation and the conclusions they draw. Then we take appropriate actions afterwards to make sure it doesn't happen again. We need to restore trust in the police department. Albuquerque deserves better. Thank you.
Rudolph Serrano, followed by Andrea Calderon.
President Don Lewis, members of the council, first I want to congratulate Michael Reilly for new director of emergency management for our city. I think that's a great call. Intelligence is what we need, especially when we're talking to a city that is the number one object for a terrorist attack. We have 350 terrorists that crossed the border within the last year, according to the FBI. And we are one of the targets. And analyzing that, I was analyzing what area could be, you know, be hurt. And I follow the LGBT community because it happens that when they reach 10%, they destroy the whole community where they live at. And we have 10% of LGBT community in the university area. And we can follow it by the STGs that we have, the number one in the nation. And they come also with AIDS. My brother, I mean, is one of them. And they infect each other as a sport, you know? And I'm more concerned of our children. You know, these STG statistics are coming with at least a 2,000% increase in lesbians and 1,000 increase in gays, but most of the concern is the children. Why are all children infected with STG? What are we doing to investigate who is infecting our childrens with STG and to do a criminal investigation, input criminal charges in these people and tell them your rights ends when the children's rights begin? Because they do have rights and they deserve the best, just like everyone else. So let's think about our childrens because that's what's going to decide next election. You know, it's either you guys protect our children or Hispanics are going to come back for Republicans. Thank you.
Andrea Calderon, followed by Rick Lettcher on Zoom.
Hi, good evening, council. Thank you for having us at Public Comment once again. I'm actually here to talk to you and encourage you all to hold a budget transparency night. In other cities, this is called a taxpayers' night. And it is an evening where the public gets to come, usually in a gallery walk format, and see the budget that City Council has approved and where the money is actually going at various departments and to which interventions they will, you know, flood or go into, I'm sorry. So I think this would be a great move for government transparency in Albuquerque. The only way that residents are currently able to keep up with budget allocations is to sit through budget hearings, which, as you all know, several and several hours are quite exhaustive. I've sat through a couple of, you know, a good number of those last year. And it's just not something that I would anticipate that mothers, that folks with families, that students would be able to really spend the time to do. So, you know, I think this is something that is a non-political event. It would be really great to see that kind of collaboration occur across the chambers of government with the legislative branch and the executive branch. And I just think it would be, you know, I just want to encourage you to encourage administration while I have the administration's ear to have their budget office lead the way in having that kind of event that would really allow the public to have better insight into what's going on at the city. I also would recommend that the Indicators Progress Commission be a part of that process because I think they've really developed some community indicators that residents have given input in, but they really want to see the needle, you know, move on to improve the well-being of residents. And so this would be a great way to see how interventions match up with those community conditions and the shift that's happening there. Sorry. Sorry for going over my time. Thank you all so much.
Up next on Zoom, we have Rick Lettcher, followed by Rowan Gallagher.
Hello, my name is Rick Lettcher. I live at 805 Monzano Street Northeast. I am speaking today in favor of adopting a new article amending Housing Code, Chapter 14, Article 3. I live next door to a substandard property. This address is 5005 Mountain Road Northeast. The property is boarded up and has been under city code enforcement custodianship for four years. Currently, the property owner is awaiting trial for felony charges related to a SWAT situation that occurred on the property on January 24. The property owner has a vast history of criminal activity compounded with mental illness and drug addictions, which leaves the property owner incapable to render repairs or to make the property safe for lawful human habitation. APD was called on the property 18 times in the month of January. In the month of February, the property owner set fire to the residence in which 11 AFD and APD units were dispatched. During the owner's last incarceration at MDC, the property was broken into last week and copper thieves gutted the main electrical panels, pulled down PNM electrical service from the overhead power lines, leaving the main electrical power lines exposed to an adjacent property. These dangerous situations are in close proximity to my house, putting my family and my neighbors at risk. This is why I'm speaking in favor of the administrative demolition ordinance to be adopted into Housing Code. The concerned citizens in the Palo Alto neighborhood have created a watch group to monitor these dangerous situations and have recently met with APD Commander Del Greco and city code enforcement officials Mr. Kaiser and Ms. Moorefield last month. Commander Del Greco has deemed the property owner a violent criminal with mental illness and a danger to the community. Code enforcement officials have asked our neighborhood group to appeal to City Council, highlighting the relevant nature in which adopting this new article into Housing Code would mitigate dangerous situations for our neighborhood and others in our community. Thank you.
Rowan Gallagher, followed by Jeff and Sarah Chenoweth.
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Rowan Gallagher and I'm 17 years old. I'm here to talk about something that's really impacting my neighborhood. I live near San Mateo and Lomas in the Pueblo Alto neighborhood. Across the street from my house is a house that's been boarded up for four years. The owner is in and out of jail, and whenever he gets out, he comes back to the house. Just in the past month, we've had the SWAT team, police, and fire department there. The house is strewn with garbage and recently had a fire. From what I'm told, the fire wasn't bad enough to demolish the house right away, but the fire department marked it with a red X to warn people that it's dangerous. I've been woken up by the sound of windows breaking, the owner yelling, and rocks hitting cars. My mom told me that the police were called there 18 times in January and 118 times in the past four years. Just recently, on February 6, I woke up to lights and sirens at midnight when the man set his house on fire. The proposed bill to speed up the demolition of houses like this one seems like an important step to help manage the situation. I heard about a similar house that took 20 years to demolish, and if that happens here, I don't think we can stay in this neighborhood. Demolishing this house is the only way that we can get our lives back. I'm here to support the bill and to urge you to do the same. I know there are other houses like this in the city and that our situation isn't unique. I also feel for the owner. He has mental illness and there isn't a good place for him, but we- He has mental illness and there isn't a good place for him, but we have to feel safe in our homes, and right now we don't. Thank you for your time.
Up next, we have Jeff and Sarah Chenoweth, followed by David Gorgone. Jeff and Sarah Chenoweth, followed by David Gorgone.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Jeff Chinowith. I live in the Pueblo Alto neighborhood across the street from 5005 Mountain Road Northeast. I'm here to show my support for the Code 14, Article 3, proposed administrative demolition ordinance. For the past 13 years, we have lived in this neighborhood, and before the current owner had any involvement, it felt like a really safe neighborhood. It's a shame that we spend less time outside and I no longer feel comfortable with our kids playing outside our back, outside of our backyard due to the increased problems this house has attracted. When the owner is not locked up, he can frequently be heard yelling at the top of his lungs, threatening to kill neighbors, contractors, breaking things, throwing trash around and into the street, bringing trouble into the neighborhood along with drugs. He has broken my windshield with a large rock. He's damaged my wife's car as well as our neighbor's car. He has lit fires on his porch in the alley and inside of his house, almost burning it down. He has chased people from his house with a machete and chainsaw, ran from police whenever possible, and keeps everyone on edge constantly. He has caused several lasting police standoffs and SWAT situations and has caused the fire department to come out several times. He breaks into his boarded up house when he's not supposed to be there on the property at all. When he's locked up, the house attracts squatters and copper thieves. Before the fire damage, the house had holes in the floor, piled up stuff everywhere, drug paraphernalia and excrement smeared all over the walls, according to sources who entered it. Now the house has water damage, the ceiling and insulation have been removed and is beyond repair. The house will attract more and more trouble in his unsightly. This is a good neighborhood being dragged down by a neglected and dangerous property. The proposed bill is really the only solution for us to have a sense of peace and safety in our neighborhood again. Please consider the urgency of this matter as it means a lot to us. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. And then Syrah's here also. Sorry, we're on the same computer.
Oh, please go ahead, Syrah.
Do I need a timer?
Technically, you did sign up, so please feel free.
Members of the city council, my name is Syrah Chinowith. I am 16 years old and I live in the Pueblo Alto neighborhood across the street from 5005 Mountain Road Northeast. I am here in solidarity with my family, neighbors, and greater community to show my support for the proposed administrative demolition ordinance. We have all been dealing with a very sad, distressing, and dangerous situation in regards to 5005 Mountain for at least the past four years. My little brother and I are not allowed to walk by that house because of all the dangerous things that are constantly occurring there. I love my neighborhood, but this house and all the crazy things happening there makes me feel like I live in a bad one. The house has been boarded up for years and no one is supposed to go inside, but just a couple of weeks ago, me and my parents were awakened in the middle of the night to tons of lights and sirens because the owner broke in and set it on fire after having us all on edge in the days before by starting a fire in the alleyway right by my house and then went on the front porch of 5005 Mountain. When I woke up, I thought my house was on fire, and when I knew it wasn't mine, I got very worried for my neighbors on the other side of the wall from where the fire was. Just last week, one of the boards to the house was removed and a window was broken out, in addition to an electrical line being cut and left dangling in the alley. When the owner isn't there, which is often, it seems to be a magnet for trouble, like people doing drugs there or just trying to get inside. And when the owner is out of jail, he not only, um, uh, comes to the house and throws garbage, glass, large rocks, and furniture all over, uh, not only his yard, but also the street and even other people's yards. We were told at one time that he was allowed to be there during daylight to fix his house up, but he just stayed all night and never fixed anything. He actually started destroying more things every time he was there. My biggest fear now is the house being on fire again and someone else's house burning too. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, and I hope the bill is passed. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Up next, we have David Gorgone.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the city council.
Good evening.
Can you hear me? I hope.
Yes, we can.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name's David Gorgone. I was born in Albuquerque and currently live in the Pueblo Alto neighborhood in northeast Albuquerque. Over the past 10 years, I've noticed an increase in boarded up, destroyed, and uninhabitable commercial and residential structures in our city. In our area, many have been broken into and some set on fire. But this isn't just about my neighborhood. This is about all the quadrants in our city. I used to wonder why the city or the property owners didn't take care of these properties. What was wrong? Well, now I understand. It's not that simple. Living near a commercial strip mall disaster and across the street from a troubled residence, I've learned the city is doing what they can under the current ordinance timeframe guidelines, but the issue affects all of us. We're all in this together, but the current ordinance seems to favor protecting the property owner over the safety, rights, and well-being of the neighborhood. By speeding up the time from notification to demolition under the revised ordinance, we can better protect our citizens. It's crucial for the safety of AFR, AFD, PNM, the gas company, and the code enforcement personnel. If not addressed expediently, these properties become continuously attractive nuisances and a safety hazard to people who pass by. Well, thank you for listening, and I urge you to support this ordinance.
Mr. President, that concludes general public comments.
Okay, thank you. The council will take a 30-minute recess.
Okay, we're back. We're on approvals, item thirteen on our agenda tonight. Item A is EC three eighty-three. This is declaring five oh eight First Street Northwest, nonessential for municipal purposes. I move approval.
Okay.
Motion approval, or motion in second from various councillors. We'll say councillor Grouse. Councillors, any discussion on EC three eighty-three? Councillor Champagne?
I just have one question for the administration. The price, is, do we have a set price that we're selling this, or?
Mr. President, councillor Champagne, I all of a sudden couldn't remember your name, I apologize. We have an appraised value on this property. If we made the decision to sell it by auction, then we use the auction house to do that. I want to, if I may, just address that making this, moving this forward does not mean that we have to sell the property. This allows us the opportunity to consider multiple options, one of which is selling. The other is that it could, it would allow us to move this property into MRA as a developer, a property that could be developed as well through the MRA process. It also allows for us to, any entity that has capital outlay dollars to make an improvement that might be interested, whether that's likely a nonprofit that may have that, it allows us the opportunity to also discuss the possibilities with them. So, I want to be very clear, our intent is not necessarily that we have to sell. We want to give ourselves the opportunity to have a more robust conversation in the community for the use of this property.
Okay. Mr. President, the reason why I ask is that, that specific deal, knowing the plans for the rail trail there, that's a prime location that if it was for a profit, then why not wait till later when it's valued more?
Mr. President, councillor Champagne, you know, our interest is really looking at the possibilities, and we want to be in a position to consider all of these options. Our goal is for this to be activated for a good quality use on the street that it's on there. As you all know, we've made improvements with the Marquette continuation that's just south of it, and we think that ensuring that the building doesn't sit just empty is the best opportunity for us to engage in these discussions. We are looking for the opportunity to explore the possibilities, and by doing this, it opens up many other possibilities as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Councillor Grouse?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you tell us if there are people that are interested in this property?
Mr. President, councillor Grouse, we have had folks that own property adjacent to it express interest in knowing what our plans are. They've expressed interest in understanding the types of uses we would consider because they have the developments that they have on that street. So, they have been paying attention and are interested in whether or not we would be selling or looking for developments. So, the, all of the other businesses in the area, not all of them, I should say, several of the businesses in the area have expressed interest in this process and have been paying attention and are, have talked about the possibility of purchase if we make the decision to sell.
Thank you, Mr. President. One more question. What were those things that you, you told, you know, you, they asked about, and what were the options that you were expressing?
Thank you, Mr. President, and councillor Grouse. As an administration, we've had multiple discussions about several nonprofits that are looking for the ability to improve a space for their specific needs, and none of them have entered into any sort of commitment yet, so I don't want to imply that we have any commitments, but we do have several nonprofits that have discussed needs for performing spaces or arts gallery spaces. Again, no agreements or, we also have thought about whether or not through MRA development, if there are businesses that are interested in being located downtown, if we have the opportunity to utilize the facility for a business to grow or start in the area. And so, we're really, we really hope to be in a position to have a much broader, open discussion about those based upon it being considered nonessential for the city, and we can think through all of those options.
Thank you. I'm just going to throw this out there. Would it be a good place for an emergency shelter?
Thank you, Mr. President, or, Mr. President, thank you councillor Grouse for the question. Based upon the location and the limitations of, of this building, I think it's important to note, there's two parking spots in front of this spot. The access to it is semi-limited, and based upon the improvements that have happened in the, in the neighborhood there, we did at one time assess it for that purpose and found that some of the limitations of the, that are in there. It does not have improvements that would lend itself to being a shelter in its current condition.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Seen it before, I just don't want to see it again. Hopefully, if this, if this lies in the rail trail, are we going to be seeing it repurchased as a city property later on?
Mr. President, councillor Sanchez, that is not our intent. That is why we actually want this to be an opportunity for us to consider all of the uses so that we make a well-informed decision as we move through this. And it's important to note, it doesn't mean that we have to dispose of the property. We want to be in a position that we can consider these other options.
The only thing that, that concerns is if we get rid of the property, sell it at a lower price, and then turn around and buy it for the rail trail at a, at a higher price, then that is an appearance of impropriety that we just can't accept.
All right, councillors, any other discussion questions? Anybody sign up to speak on this?
No, Mr. President.
No? Okay. All right, other discussion questions? All right, this, this bill, this is an EC, it's been moved and seconded. Those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes, those opposed, no. Motion, motion passes unanimously. EC thirty-three is Metropolitan Redevelopment Agency two thousand twenty-three annual report. I move receipt, be noted. Motion seconded for councillor Passan. Yeah, councillors, this is a receipt, be noted. I think everybody's seen this report, it's in your iPads. We, you know, went over in committee, if you have any questions about it, glad to do that, but I think, again, we're just, receipt be noted. I just want to comment on it. You know, we have a lot of MRAs all around the city, and, you know, when comparable to the amount of MRAs, I think you've got to acknowledge that we could be doing a whole lot more, and this program could be a lot more effective. I think, you know, Mr. Bruner, you know, and others have really been pushing for, you know, more public involvement, and there's a bill before the legislature right now. I know the administration is supportive of that, and certainly something that we, I think, need to really, really push forward for, you know, we want to get things done, and we want to incentivize development and growth in these areas, and I think it's going to take a lot more than our current, you know, MRAs to be able to do that. So, but councillors, any discussion questions? Anybody sign up to speak on this?
No.
No, no speakers, councillors? All right, again, receipt be noticed, been moved and seconded. Those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes, those opposed, motion passes. All right. So, our, item C is EC thirty-five, emergency purchase of migrants, sheltering service to avoid interruption in service while FEMA grants funds are being competitively procured. I move approval. Motion seconded by councillor Rogers. Anyone sign up to speak on this?
No, Mr. President.
Okay, councillor, any discussion? Have just a, a few questions on this. My understanding is that all of this is grant funding from FEMA. Is that correct? That even, even the original money from two thousand twenty-two was, was grant funding?
Councillor President, we do have grant funding for this, and we bill every opportunity that we have. We will bill the federal government. Some of this money has not been reimbursed. Like, they will reimburse for certain expenses. We will bill everything that we possibly can, but they don't reimburse us a hundred percent. So, not all of this money.
The original, I think it was two hundred thousand dollars, that, do you know where that specific money came from? Was that out of the general fund?
It, it would have been appro, I believe it would have been appropriated out of the general fund, and we've had that question earlier tonight from council staff, and we are looking to find that specific appropriation so that we can respond back, and we will have an answer back to you. I just don't have an answer.
We don't know if it came out of the grant fund or the general fund. Do we not know that? And I, I think it was kind of an omnibus type of a, I don't, I don't believe it was before the council specifically for this funding. I think it was grouped together and some cleanup funding in December of two thousand twenty-two, but do we not know whether it came from grant, the grant fund or the general fund?
Councillor President, councillors, the, oftentimes, we make expenditures, we'll make expenditures out of the grant fund, and we will get reimbursed by a granting agency. But at the end of the day, anything that doesn't get reimbursed, we cover with the general fund, right? We, we don't have like a, a grant fund that just has matching funds in it. We, we always match with general fund money if we have to.
Have we received any grant funding for it?
Yes, I can go back to those, councillor president, we can go back to those details. We did research that last council meeting, and I, I want to say, I don't, don't quote me on this, I want to say we've received thirty to fifty thousand back from the federal government, and we continue to bill expenditures.
So, so councillors, I, I, we still don't know. I mean, this went through our committee, we had questions about, you know, the original funding, where it came from, this new funding which says it's going to be, you know, covered by FEMA, you know, grant funds, that's in the title, and honestly, we still don't know whether this came from the grant fund or out of the general fund. Correct, Mr. Prito? I don't think we, we know that correctly.
Councillor President, we are doing the research on it to see, it looks like could, some money could have been spent out of Fund two sixty-five, other money might have been general fund, but we're trying to piece it together. Our staff's been looking at it to see what we can find.
So, again, we don't know if this money came originally out of, out of two sixty-five or out of the general fund, and, and, and because of that, I'm just not willing to do that. I, I'd rather us wait till we get the grant funding. Apparently, I think we were, we, we were approved a grant from FEMA for a whole bunch more money. I'd rather us, I'd rather us, you know, wait on this until that grant funding comes through. Councillor Grant or councillor Grouse? The director you'd like to address?
Good evening, council president and members of the council. I don't know that I can answer the specific question about that funding. However, all of the FEMA reimbursement is on a reimbursement basis. They don't provide a grant like we normally typically see where they make a deposit into the city from which we spend. Every single grant dollar is one that is recouped from the federal government after many months of them going through the paperwork to make sure that every single dollar spent is in accordance with the FEMA rules.
So, all, all the money that we've spent so far, what, did it come out of two sixty-five? The, the grant, specific grant account, the fund, do you know?
I don't know the answer to that because it's an accounting type question.
Again, I, I just think this is something we should know before we vote on this. So, I, I don't think this came before the council originally, as, as specifically toward this, this project. I don't think it's good practice for us to be able to, to vote on this, especially when we don't know what account that it's coming from. So, councillors, any other discussion? Question? I'm, I'm going to recommend a deferral. Go ahead, Mr. Suss.
Councillor President, so whether it comes out of the grant fund or the general fund, we don't have money just sitting in the grant fund. So, like the director said, we, we expend money, we request reimbursement, much like we do at the state. We expend money, we request, request reimbursement, and we don't generally get a hundred percent of our reimbursements back. So, whether it came out of the grant fund two sixty-five or whether it came out of general fund one ten, at, at the end of the day, it's whatever's not reimbursed, whatever expenditures we make that aren't reimbursed are, are covered by the general fund. We don't have a balance in the grant fund, and typically, you know, we would expend funds negative in that fund and get a reimbursement and, and put it back, much like you would draw your bank account down and then get reimbursed by, by someone.
But again, I, I don't know how this even came before the council originally. I know that the council didn't specifically vote to put this funding into this, this service. I think it was grouped together in some way. It was, again, it was kind of a cleanup bill at some point. You know, the council never made a decision to do this specifically. From, I mean, even in a bill like this, it I mean, even in a bill like this, it specifically says these are grant funds. And yet, if you're saying that we're going to spend general fund money and there's really no guarantee of grant funds, then I don't like that. I don't think it's good practice. So, Counsel Rogers.
Mr. President, I think it's important to note that this is also, our deferring it will also hold up the payment to our vendor, who has already completed the work. And so, I just want us to know that deferring that would, would that affect their payment, the vendor? That's what I'm worried about, is making sure whatever we do isn't going to hold up the vendor who did the work already to get paid.
Counsel President, Counselor Rogers, we will not hold payment to the vendor. We will pay the vendor and we'll work this out among us on the back end.
That's a part of the problem. I mean, so have you spent more than $100,000?
Counsel President, we are before you because we have spent more than $100,000.
Well, thank you. You've already spent over $100,000. And so, I mean, I believe our charter says that, you know, in order to spend over $100,000, you have to come back to us and get approval for it again. But you've already spent $100,000. And so, again, I think that's a moot point. It's going to happen anyways, you know, with the way the administration's operating these funds. I'm going to move a deferral at least till, you know, two weeks. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question. You said that we won't get reimbursed 100%. How much do you anticipate us to get reimbursed?
Counsel President, Counselor Grout, I don't, I can't estimate that at this point. I think so far, we've been, I think we've seen 25% to 30% reimbursement on the fund based on what I remember from our calculations last time. And it's possible that we will get additional reimbursements from the federal government. Going forward, you know, the new grant that we have, that we have, it was awarded for 700 and some odd thousand dollars. Going forward, we will bill, again, just like this one, we will bill every expenditure that we think is applicable. And we will, you know, request reimbursement for those going forward on the new grant.
Mr. President, could you get us a list of what you think? What are the expenses that are reimbursable versus the ones that are not? I'm very, very curious.
We can get that for you. I do know the new grant is very broad. The new grant that we are seeking a contract administrator for, the new grant is everything from temporary shelter, food, emergency or acute medical care. There's also transportation costs that are reimbursable. And I will say, you know, we will bill the federal government for any transportation costs. If we have an individual that has been released from ICE custody and they need to move on to a forward destination, we will pay for that to get them to their sponsor or their next destination. And we will build the federal government for that.
Thank you. How many people is this handling? Like, this money, how much?
Counsel President and members of the Council, the number of migrants who presented in Albuquerque and were assisted by us in the calendar year of 2023 was a total of 1,061 migrants.
Thank you. Follow-up, are those migrants still here?
No, the vast majority have onward destination almost immediately. Sometimes, they have plane tickets or bus tickets same day. Other times, they don't have that same day and they need overnight shelter or assistance getting that. And on an occasion, some of them do choose to settle in Albuquerque because they don't have any other plans or people that they're trying to connect with.
Thank you, thank you.
Counsel Feubecorn.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I just want to be very clear. What happens if this is not approved, the $50,000? What services would not be provided to folks in need?
Mr. President and members of the Council, the services that are being provided right now are what I've described in terms of, there's a volunteer group of folks who help meet migrants at the sunport and at the bus station and help them kind of triage to see what kind of situation they have. And if they have onward travel right away, then they're assisted to go through TSA. They have legal documents that help them get through security. And then those that don't are transported to the shelter to get further assistance. So, they'll get some emergency food, they get some basic clothing and a place to rest and charge their phones and make that contact with their family or others that they're connecting with. So, that's what's being missed, is it would fall on the shoulders of city staff, which are very few of us doing this, and volunteers who've been doing this at no cost and raising their own money since 2019. So, we would not have a contractor able to do this for which we can seek reimbursement.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I, first of all, thank you for the work that everyone has done to make sure that immigrants are welcomed into our community and helped to get where their final destination is. My concern is that if we're not going to allocate $50,000, which in the grand scheme of things, in the city's budget, that is 1.4 billion, that says a lot about how we treat our migrant friends. But also, I'm very concerned that my partner's been one of the volunteers who went out and helped folks figure out what their next step was. And without city staff and without some assistance, I'm very, very concerned that people will fall through the cracks. They will not get the assistance they need. And we might see more of them staying in Albuquerque because they literally might not be able to find their way beyond Albuquerque. And it just seems like a very small price to pay to make sure that we are greeting people when they arrive in our country, helping them to their destination. I think you sent out something that said that the average cost per migrant was?
$257.
$257. And that seems like a really good thing for us to do. Whether or not we get reimbursed by the federal government is, in my mind, irrelevant. $257 to help someone start their new life is a reasonable amount. Thank you.
Counsel President, I wanted to clarify one point. What is before you is notification from the mayor of an emergency procurement. And under Ordinance 5519, the mayor may approve those. And then he provides notification to the Council. And so, this?
Sure. Yeah, fine. Then we've already answered that question. So, we, there was $200,000 that was put into a fund or designated. Anywhere from $100,000 to $150,000 has been spent. And now you guys come to us and say, hey, we need another, you know, $50,000 because of that. But you've also said you're going to spend the other $50,000 anyways, you know? So, the answer to the question of whether are we going to help people or not? Or is it going to happen or not? No, you're going to spend it anyways. What I'm saying is that you need to come back before us and say that this money is specifically, whether it's general fund, I mean, start with general fund money. Say, look, we're going to budget or we're going to spend this amount of money, whether we get reimbursed or not. But this bill says that it's going to be reimbursed by FEMA. That says that in the title. And so, you know, bring it back with the specific funding that's going to come out of the general fund. That's why I'm going to move for a deferral. Counsel Rogers.
Director Melendez, I just wanted to see, in addition to the information, would you also send the Council a definition of the difference between asylum seekers, undocumented folks, and refugees? Just so we understand that asylum seekers are going through the legal process to be here. So, I think that's really important to note, that we're talking about asylum seekers here. Is that correct?
Yes, Counsel President and Madam, or Member Rogers. Yes, we're talking about people who have been given a credible fear interview, is what it's called by the U.S. Government Homeland Security, to see whether they have a credible fear of being returned to their country. And once they pass that first hurdle, then they're eligible to seek asylum and go before an immigration court. And so, those are the documents that they're carrying while they're traveling legally in the United States. And these folks also have authorization after a period of time to work legally in the United States while they're making their new life and getting integrated into the American society.
Move a deferral for two weeks.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Champagne. Any other discussion on the deferral? Motion made and seconded. Those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes, those opposed, no. Pass on the 54. So, we'll go to final actions. Counsel Besson.
Mr. President, O1CS, the Committee's Substitute Administrative Demolition of Unsafe Commercial Buildings, Unsafe Accessory Structures or Dwellings Unfit for Human Habitation, adopting a new article in Chapter 14 and amending the Uniform Housing Code, Chapter 14, Article 3, I move it to pass.
A motion and a second by Counsel Feubecorn.
Mr. President, this is by request. I would invite Director Varela or the administration to go ahead and summarize some of it. I think there might be some comments, and I do see that we have one amendment pending.
Counsel President, Counsel, good evening. We're pleased to be here. We want to thank you for bringing this before the Council. As you heard from many of the public commenters, we have challenges in our city when it comes to dangerously dilapidated properties. You know that because I've been before you quite a few times over the last couple of years presenting instances of those and seeking Council approval. What this bill will do is it will ensure that the objective measures that we use to make sure that it's been inspected, that it actually is structurally unsound or unsafe and such, the same information we bring to you when we go to Council, that those stay in place. So, there's nothing subjective about the decision. However, rather than going through the Council process at the beginning, we will go to an independent hearing officer and go through that process. That process will be quicker than going to Council. I do understand that there is a proposed amendment to this bill. We had initially drafted it so that the appeals would go to District Court rather than the Council. The amendment, which the administration does not object to in any ways, or an appeal of the independent hearing officer's decision to come to City Council. So, you would still get a bite at the apple, so to speak, in these matters if somebody does appeal that. And with that, we'll stand for questions.
Counsel Besson.
Mr. President, I just want to make sure to clarify through my conversations with the Director. I mean, this is not to say that this is going to circumvent any part of the process when it comes to evaluating which properties are going to be deemed substandard or beyond the list for potential demolition. And correct me if I'm wrong, Director, but this is something too, that there's still at least a 12-month process, at least, that code enforcement and the Planning Department already go through to make sure to give proper notification to the different property owners to allow for communication and remedies. And so, it's just that, you know, there comes a point where, in my opinion, and I have been guilty of this, that when there is an appeal or when planning comes to us at Council, it definitely sometimes is easy for us to say, hey, this is a constituent in my district, so now I am going to move a deferral for 90 more days. And almost every time since I've been here, we pretty much always vote to, if not always, vote to go ahead and go with the original recommendation. And so, I think that this will allow for us to streamline the process while still offering the right kind of treatment and communication with constituents and property owners in Albuquerque. And then, you know, for the potential amendment, that seems like it's going to be coming down the hopper on that. I think also, it would make it so that we would be able to, as a Council, be able to evaluate based off of whether or not the hearing officer checked the boxes right and did the evaluation properly, rather than on what I look at as sometimes some fluffy feelings that we might have because we really, really want to represent our constituency to the fullest. But sometimes, it's not about how we feel so much as how the process has been unfolded and what's best for the city and for everyone else as well.
Counselors, any other discussion, questions for the Director? Counsel Grout.
Thank you, Mr. President. How can you be sure that the appeal process will be faster if it takes place at District Court?
And Counsel President and Counselor Grout, that is why we agreed to the amendment to where the appeal will actually go to you, to City Council, not to District Court.
But how, how do we know that when it goes to court, District Court, it will be faster?
And?
Like, what is?
Counsel President Lewis and Counselor Grout, I'm having trouble making sense of that question because if, for example, now City Council had made the decision and it was, that decision was appealed to District Court, the city now has no control over District Court timing of any matters. And it's, that's a separate branch of government entirely. So, I, this bill has nothing to do with the speed of District Court.
Mr. President, if I may help?
Counsel Besson.
Thank you, Mr. President Counselor. I think if I'm understanding correctly, if there was, if planning were to come to us at Council and we were to vote to demolish a property and then the person and property owner would decide to appeal our decision, they could then take it to District Court.
Correct.
Yeah. This would, as written, the bill would skip the part of us and allow for it to go to District Court. But then with the amendment, because the hearing officer is added into that, now there's that legal aspect of it that's happening on the front end of it rather than on the back end of the situation, if I'm correct.
That is, that is all correct, yes. And I don't mean to somehow imply that, I don't appreciate your question. I just don't understand how that, that has nothing to do with the bill.
And when I talked to you before and I asked you that same question, you and your helper told me you could not be sure we would be at the mercy of the court.
Correct. And that's, that's the case with any decision made by Council whatsoever. A land use decision, a zoning decision, anything that is appealable to District Court. The city is not in control of the District Court's timeframe.
That is correct. I would agree with that.
Yeah.
But the reason you were bringing this to us, before us, is because you wanted to do this everything quicker. And so, how do we know that this updated process is going to make things happen quicker?
So, we have several bases for knowing that's going to happen. First of all, independent hearing officers don't go dark part of the year. Independent hearing officers are at the beck and call of the city. They're on contract. And so, they don't have to fit something into their very busy agenda like City Council does. If a matter is presented to the independent hearing officer through a, you know, a notice of violation and a petition for a hearing on it, that hearing will take place somewhere between 10 and 30 days from when that is filed, unlike the Council process, which when something gets introduced to Council, Council has taken into consideration all the other items on its agendas. Council then goes through a two-week introduction process where it sits. Council then will sometimes refer it to a committee for consideration that delays it another month. And then, within a few weeks to a month later, comes back to Council. We're now approximately three months into the process. That would have taken the hearing officer 10 to 30 days to get to. And then, once we get to Council, the matter is often deferred. And Counselor Besson was correct, quite often deferred. And I can tell you that in every single one of those instances, our heart all went out to the property owner and not a single dime because they had been years and years in this process. We take this very, very seriously. We beg people to fix up their properties. It's a last resort. Every single one of those, we've come back and you've eventually issued the condemnation resolution and the thing has finally gotten removed. So, that's been the way, that's been the way it goes. So, yes, this will shorten the process. I think it will also allow Council to, rather than hearing a litany of information from the Planning Department about the years and years, actually review, like you do with Luho, a well-reasoned, focused, meaning that they didn't have divided attention with other agenda items, a well-reasoned, focused opinion issued by a hearing officer to determine whether you will uphold that or whether you will reject that.
Thank you. And one final question. You mentioned that we have a long agenda. And if you can get it on the agenda, has, how many times when you've asked for something to go on the agenda, has it not gone on the agenda that you requested?
Probably countless times. There are strict deadlines for getting stuff, I'm sorry, getting the legislative packages to the 11th floor to draft the Goldenrod Packet, which has a cover memo, the FIA. has the cover memo, the FIA, all the other analysis that's required. If we miss that deadline, which is, I believe, approximately a week before introduction period at council, then we have to wait until the next round. If it then gets, if we make that deadline but we don't have time to confer for the EC packet to make sure it's accurate, then there's another delay there. So I would say most of the time, it takes longer than when we're ready to go.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for
Well, I, you know, I definitely understand there's a need and I just disagree with the premise. If the issue is speeding up the process, then the premise is that the, you know, the council's slow with it. That's one thing. I think we can argue that and talk about that. The other is that the council's wrong, you know, the council was wrong for deferring it. And I just don't agree with that premise. I think if we, if we agree with this, we absolutely, it's a matter of saying that the council has made wrong decisions regarding hearing a case and then deferring it. And I think, I can't say that. I can't say that this council, even though I didn't, you know, vote on that every single time a deferral, I can't say that the council was wrong because that's been the process, that is the process for going through that. And so I don't think that, I mean, we can get bills going through here pretty quickly. You have a deadline until really on Friday is the deadline. I mean, the main process is to get it through and get to the administration and us by Tuesday, but, you know, bills can still be introduced with proper, you know, requests. And then, and bills can go directly to the, you know, to council meetings and they don't have to go through a long process. And so there might be some other ways that we can fix that. But again, the other reasoning is that, hey, it's just slow because the council's been wrong. And I can't agree with that either. I don't believe that the council's been wrong, certainly not every time. And so, so again, this goes back to the, hey, let's speed it up. It's taken too long because the, you know, the council process and the council always defers it. Well, then you gotta, then you gotta admit that the council's been wrong about it. I don't believe it has. Counsel opinion?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a point of clarification. I think some of the public speakers were talking about houses and not necessarily commercial buildings. But I just want to just kind of try to explain my rationale here in terms of both the housing and the, these commercial buildings, which the bill is about today, and it's not about housing. But just, I just want to say that, you know, this along with the commercial buildings, you know, I've watched over the years, I think I'm here, I've been here eight years, nine years, going on nine years now, and just, you know, I usually vote no to any demolitions or of homes. And, but I would just beg to say that I think maybe I can ask the staff to put together an amendment in here. I won't be supporting the bill either way, but an amendment in here to actually ask if we can have like the demographics and the socioeconomic status of the folks, that the houses or the buildings that get demolished, where they're at. Because just recently, you know, there was one that we had, it was a long time, it was an Asian lady who had a business in, I think, the southeast. And, you know, she really didn't have the money. I would venture to say that anybody on this council, if we had an issue with our house and we had burned part of our house down, we would be able to figure out how to refinance or get some capital to be able to fix our house. But many times when these cases come in front of us, they're really like hardship cases. They just don't have the money or the resources to go and refinance their building or refinance their house or have the insurance. And they are, they're trying to hold on to their property as long as they possibly can. And I think that's why, alluding to what Counselor Lewis is suggesting, is that we're not wrong. Because when you have someone like this lady who eventually the vote was to do what we do, we weren't wrong because we kept on giving her opportunity after opportunity. Unfortunately, because of her hardship, she just didn't have it. So at the end of the day, she was forced to kind of say, hey, I'm, I can't fix it. I can't afford to even pay the demolition fee. So why doesn't the city just go ahead and demolish it for me? It'll be on my taxes and I'll sell it and hopefully I'll be able to get at least some money from some of the business, the property that I owned for so many years and maybe just land up with a handful of, a handful of money compared to what she could have gotten. And I do see it as an opportunity for others who do have the resources. Lots, sometimes these properties are in primaries and they come in and they'll buy it and turn it into the wonderful thing that that same Asian lady had always envisioned it to be. So just to say that, I just, I will not be supporting this bill. So thank you.
Counsel Rogers, we're going to move the floor amendment. Or we already?
Okay. Counsel Rogers.
All right. I just wanted to echo, thank you, Mr. President, that we did do a floor amendment to add that. It's in our iPad, so I will get to that after this first amendment to add, because I had the same question. Thank you.
And so Counsel Grout.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a floor amendment to Committee Subs 024-1. On page six, beginning line three, revise as follows. The hearing officer shall issue and serve an order that advises the owner of the owner's right to file an appeal of the hearing officer's decision with the city council. The owner may file a written objection with the city clerk within 10 days of the receipt of the order, asking for a hearing before the city council. The city clerk shall deliver the written objection to city council within 15 days of receiving the written objection. Such an appeal shall be heard after notice at the first available meeting of the city council. The council may affirm, reverse, or modify the decision of the independent hearing officer. Property owners aggrieved by the decision of city council can appeal to district court. And this amendment proposes to send appeals of the independent hearing officer to council instead of district court. Appeals of the city council decision would go to district court. The process would go as follows. Independent hearing officer, property owner has 10 days to appeal. Appeal is submitted within 10 days to the clerk. Clerk has 15 days to transmit to council. The council receives the appeal and schedules on the first available council meeting. So that's it.
Give a second. So, give a second.
Second.
Okay. So Counsel Grout's moved the floor amendment. It's been seconded. Questions on the floor amendment? Go for vote then. Those in favor of the floor amendment say yes. Yes. Those opposed, no. All right, that passes. So this is oh one, the committee substitute has amended. Counsel Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have, I'm also on amendment to oh-24-1. And I'd like to include what Counselor Penya brought up about socioeconomic status, because I did not include that in my amendment. And so right now, it reads on page eight. Thank you for the hard copy.
Yes, please.
And Counselor President and Counselor Rogers, can you explain again where that is? We missed it. We were trying to get to the amendment.
I mean, this is kind of described by Counsel opinion. If we're going to add this, we probably, it sounds like more than just writing a quick sentence. So if we do this, I'm going to recommend we defer this whole thing.
Well, we already actually, if I may, Mr. President, have a guide for the city of how to collect demographics. So we would just need to pull from that guide the approved questions that are already approved by city, by the city, on what demographics we could pull.
We got to get language down that Counsel Penya suggested here. So is that what, you guys, you guys working on that right now?
Mr. President?
Counsel Pisan.
I think the amendment, and correct me if I'm wrong, Counsel Rogers, but it would be the planning department shall track the race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status of the property owners, da-da-da-da-da.
Correct.
So Counsel Penya, is that what you, the essence of what you were wanting? Okay, so this amendment does that then?
Yes. And I'll second it, but I'll vote for the amendment.
So the recommendation is for this amendment as it's written? Okay.
Correct. So all we're doing is adding after race and ethnicity, socioeconomic status.
Okay. All right. So everybody has that? We're clear on that and we're okay to vote for it? Okay. Going on. So that was, that's an amendment moved by Counselor Rogers. We have a second?
Thank you.
Second by Counsel Penya. Any other questions, discussion on the amendment? Counsel Fubacorn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to verify, I know when we were looking at this, these types of notifications, we have, this council has passed a requirement that other languages be included in the notification. Can you just walk us through that requirement now and how it's working?
Yes. The entire city, including the planning department, has a language access requirement pursuant to administrative policy as well as, I think, to council directive. And so we have translators on board anytime anybody asks for a counselor, I mean, for a translator. We also, in the communication, provide the information to them as well, letting them know that that's an offer. We've not had any instances whatsoever where somebody has stated that they, that English was not their first language, for example, and that they needed help with translating where that wasn't provided. We're very active. I have a deputy, two deputies actually, Robin Rose, who's an attorney, and James Aranda, who's a certified master planner, both of them in charge and making sure that's deployed throughout the department.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Pisan on the amendment.
Mr. President, I guess I'm not fundamentally opposed to this, but at what point is tracking race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status actually negative? I mean, like, we're tracking this for data, but then at what point does it backfire into we're actually tracking people now? And then I just, I would hate, and I don't know where that boundary is. How do we know whether or not we're doing something positive or negative when it comes to potential racism and tracking, so to speak, that people come back with?
Well, I probably could offer.
Counsel Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the idea is that it's, I don't, I personally, as an equity practitioner, don't see a harm that could be caused by making sure that we aren't seeing, because historically, these things usually happen to poor folks and people of color, historically. And so for us, it's just the way, I don't think we're asking for it to be public. We're not asking for, it's just for us to make sure we're monitoring that and we know who it's affecting at the higher rate.
Just tracking data. Director, do you see any, is your department, has the ability to be able to do that, track this data?
Yes, we certainly. There are, right now, data questionnaires that are present in other departments in the city and would use one of those questionnaires.
Okay. Counsel's other discussion on the amendment?
Mr. President, I do want to just
Counsel Pisan, then Counsel Grout.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to point out that it will be public if it's in the form of an EC, just to make sure that we're clear.
Counsel Grout. Okay. Comment? Okay. Uh, staff?
We just realized that there are two meanings for biannual, and we wanted to check whether you meant twice a year or every two years. That's what we thought. Okay. Thank you. In the amendment, rather than using the phrase biannual, we'll use the word twice a year.
All right. The amendment's been moved and seconded. Those in favor say yes. Raise your hand. Those opposed, no. Motion passes. We're back and the bill is amended twice. Back to sponsors. Is there any other discussion? We'll go back to the sponsors close. I'll make just a quick comment. I, you know, again, I guess I'll just, you know, re-say this. I'm not sure if we're, I just don't, not sure if it's really a problem, you know? I think the process is, the process, even if it takes long, is still good, you know? And I don't think it's a bad thing when there's a long process. But at the same time, I think there's very few issues relative, you know? And I really think, and with all respect to our department, I know it's always a challenge, but I think there's some bigger challenges and bigger, bigger problems when it comes to, you know, our planning and, you know, moving our permits forward and being able to make sure that we're, we're really efficient as a department. And again, that's nothing negative on our Department of Director. It's just, that's a need probably in every planning department in our whole, in the country, you know? I just want us to get better and better and better at that and focus on some of those things. And I know that we're not, you know, focusing on this in the place of that. I'm just, I just want to make a, make a point of that. So, but let's go back to the sponsors. Counsel Pisan.
Mr. President, a couple of things I want to add based off of the conversation. I wanted to add that part of what increases the timeline, even though it's fully within the purview of council, is oftentimes when it does get to committee, this type of bill, we defer it a few times in committee. And then it comes to full council where we then defer it a few more times. And so it does elong, I've seen it elongate the process quite a bit. I respectfully disagree that by voting for this bill, it means that we're saying we were wrong before, because I don't think the council has been wrong in deferring before. But I do think that we do need to increase efficiency. And that's what the purpose of this is, is to be able to increase efficiency while making sure that people get their property rights and their due diligence. And while we're talking about a city that is melting down with dilapidated, debaucherous, really problematic behavior, I think that it's very difficult for us to sit here and say, we should make sure to hang on to these properties that have had very elongated lengths of time to have an opportunity to rectify and repair their, their commercial property, which is now becoming an increased magnet for further abuse, fire, danger, not only for our first responders, but for the community members who might be seeking shelter in there, might be lighting a fire, might be doing something on purpose in a negative fashion. There's a multitude of reasons. So for us to say that we want to clean up our city and be efficient and do our due diligence as a council, I absolutely believe that this bill will help smooth that out a little bit while also making sure that we keep property rights in balance for the city of Albuquerque and keep people safer in a more efficient, expeditious process so that it can be a little bit fairer for everybody. You know, I just think that, I do have one more question, though, Director. How many properties that we end up demolishing when it does come through the traditional process, would you say could be sold to a different property owner to be refurbished and rebuilt without raising it to the ground?
Zero.
Okay. So I think that we have, we also have a responsibility to the public to make sure that they are safe too, and we prevent further damage and further danger from occurring and do it in a way that's best for them as well as, as well as the owner themselves. So I do urge your support. I think this would be a good decision for Albuquerque.
We do have a few speakers. So Ms. Garp, or Ms. Cornelius, if you call the
Thank you, Mr. President. Our first speaker is Tyler Richter, followed by, excuse me, excuse me, Ted Nimitzki.
Good evening, counselors. I guess I was here before. I'm here again. You've heard about some of the homes in my neighborhood. I'm here representing the Pueblo Alto neighborhood. I'm here representing D7. And I don't think anybody thinks that the council is wrong in demolishing some of these processes and some of these properties, but the process just takes too long. And the public loses its faith and we, we really stop believing that anybody on this council can do what they say that they're here to do. And I understand that we have a responsibility to commit, to protect people's property rights. But at some point, inaction, inattention, budgets don't lend themselves to them being able to take care of their property. And it needs to be put back on the market and it needs to be rehabilitated and to serve a higher purpose for the city and county of, or the city of Albuquerque. Appreciate it.
Ted Nimitzki, followed by David Gorgone on Zoom. Ted Nimitzki, followed by David Gorgone on Zoom.
Thank you. My name is Ted Nimitzki. I can see so many issues with this whole ordinance, residential and commercial. Who give them rights by overall, who decided which property are not suitable to live? I'm talking right here now of a property recently been sizeded, taken, that is Central and Wyoming Inc. across from McDonald's gas station. Our owners could not compete, survive competing with big monopoly like Circle K or Sims Club etc., Morphyo, and so on. So anyway, he walk out simply, building is construction, all stone veneer outside. Who give them rights to walk inside? That was, the report says. And that's simply so, so lies. Who, who was inside the assess? Is it suitable or not? That has happened recently when he walk out. So anyway, doors are stolen all the way around the, there were one building and another building, whereas was car wash, and so all locked up, boarded. So anyway, this clearly so many, many issues with whole ordinance about owner, homeowner, or preferred owner rights. And that I will go to district court.
All right, we're back in the bill. This is, uh, one, two, oh, one.
We have one more.
Oh, do we have one more? Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you. That is David Gorgone on Zoom. Thank you.
Good evening, members of city council. I spoke once earlier, and I'd like to reiterate, I'm in support of this, these changes and, and the amendments. And I think that the council and the zoning and code enforcement are protecting the commercial property owner and the property rights of the homes. And this is something in all our quadrants. And the houses we're talking about and the commercial properties are those that have been open, broken into, or boarded up for several years. And at that point, it can still go forward. Someone can still fix them up or take ownership of them, but that doesn't seem to happen. And what I've seen in our neighborhood and along San Mateo, too, in a strip mall, it was an attractant to people to break in again, and sometimes it encouraged theft, fires, and drug use, frankly. The police have tried to help, and we really appreciate code enforcement. But some of these things happen over and over again until the property is so dilapidated it can't be rehabilitated. But please think about us, the constituents around these properties in all the quadrants. Thank you very much.
That concludes comment, Mr. President.
Thank you.
All right, councilors, we had a long discussion and a lot of questions and already did our, kind of our final closing arguments, but anything else before we go to a vote?
I have two more questions, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. What, somebody, the independent hearing officer, what are his qualifications or her qualifications? Do you hear this?
And Counselor President, Counselor Grouse, the independent hearing officer pursuant to the administrative hearing rule would be a licensed attorney, somebody who has a lot of experience listening objectively to evidence that's presented before them, making a ruling only based on that evidence, and then writing a coherent decision that is based on the proof points that are in the particular ordinance.
Thank you. And follow up, how long does he give that right away, that decision? What is that turnaround?
And I don't have the exact figure right in front of me, but I believe he has to issue, they usually don't rule from the bench, so to speak. They, they issue a written decision, much like Luho does, and it would depend on the complexity of the information that they're filtering in in order to support and prove that their decision is based on evidence. But it would be within just a matter of a few days.
A few days?
Yes.
And then is, when, when the matter is heard before the hearing officer, is it heard in one day and that's it, or is it also extended?
That also would be on a case-by-case basis. I would think that in most instances, that the information provided by code enforcement and building safety and the inspectors would take anywhere from, oh, maybe a half an hour to an hour to present, depending on the witnesses we bring in. If we're bringing in AFR, which sometimes we will, to talk about the danger and the fire hazard component, these properties that have had multiple fires in them. If we're bringing in APD officers to talk about the danger they face from being in these properties and such, then we would have more witnesses than simply the building inspector to testify. So those may take a bit longer, yes. And then whether it's continued to a later, just depends on the, the particular case. But I would think most of them would be heard in one setting.
Thank you. And this is for demolition, so you want to raise the property. It's not reconstruct.
Correct, correct. It's, it's when you get to the tail end of a bad property that's literally falling down, that we're getting dozens or even hundreds of calls on, APD calls, fire rescue calls, code enforcement calls, from neighbors, from everybody who takes care of their properties. But as, as you heard the young men talking earlier, they can't even walk in front of that one house by them. It's, it's, it's those types of properties, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, there's a motion for a do pass of committee substitute oh, one, as amended and seconded. Those in favor, say yes, raise your hand. Those opposed, no, raise your hand, no. Motion passes on a seven-two. We're going to go now to item B, Counsel Feebacorn, oh, two.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is oh, two, amending chapter 14, Article 5, Part 1, Section 4 and 9, a portion of flood hazard and drainage control, replace FEMA zone designations with FEMA designated 100-year flood plain, et cetera. I am going to move a do pass.
A motion, second by Counsel Sanchez for a do pass. Councilors, any questions, discussion? Somebody sign up to speak first?
No.
All right, no speakers. Councilors, any discussion? I do have an amendment. I'll go and introduce that amendment. This is amendment number one, councilors, it's in your iPads. If you look at amendment number one, two, oh, twenty-four, two. This is in section one, you know, I just felt like we could, we could write this a little bit better. Effective lands could be explained a little more clearly and just really just point people to the, to the IDO where it makes sense. If there's any kind of changes, that we would simply go to the IDO, rather than this possibly being seen as another, you know, regulation. We should really have our regulations all in one place, which is the IDO when it comes to, you know, when it comes to planning in this regard. So if you read that, it adds on there, no site clearing, grubbing, or dirt work are permitted prior to the approval of a site plan if extensive lands analysis necessitates a site plan, EPC approval per the IDO, section 14. So again, it really just directs people to the, to the IDO and the regulations that are in the IDO. I think it's important and just can be easily followed when it comes to, you know, policymakers and people that are doing, you know, the kind of work this would apply to. So that's what, that's what this amendment does. A motion, second by Counsel Sanchez. Any discussion on the amendment? All right, so the amendment's been moved and seconded. Those in favor, say yes, raise your hand. Yes, those opposed, no. Motion passes. Back in the bill, councilors, any other amendments, questions, discussion? All right. No other discussion, we'll go to the vote. Make sure I'm catching everybody. Go to the vote. This is, again, oh, two. It's been moved and amended, motion is second. Did I get all this right?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, people are confused because I had an amendment in the iPad, but my amendment did exactly what your amendment did, so I'm not moving it. So I just wanted to, everyone seems concerned. We're good.
This is oh, two. All those in favor, say yes, raise your hand. Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Go to item C. Counsel Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our four approving and authorizing the filing of attached grant application for Brian discretionary community project grant with the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Affairs, and providing an appropriation to the Albuquerque Community Safety Department in fiscal year 24. I move for a do pass.
Motion, second by Counsel Feebacorn for a do pass. We have a floor amendment, Counsel Rogers.
Thank you so much. Just the background, this is where, this is a technical edit or a technical item, just to make sure that the grant numbers match correctly, and so that's all this is for. So it's just a technical.
All right, so the, you need to move that, Counsel Rogers?
Yes, I move for a do pass.
Counsel Rogers is moving the floor amendment number one, second, a second by Counsel Baca. Any other discussion, comments on the amendment? This is the floor amendment to R4. Those in favor, say yes, raise your hand. Yes, those opposed, no. Motion passes. We're back in the bill. Anyone sign up to speak? We do have one speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have Ted Nimitzki to speak on R4.
Mr. Nimitzki, you want to speak on the bill? All right, let's move on. Back to, we're back in the administration, have any comment on it? Okay. Nope? All right. So back in the final bill, as amended, Counsel Rogers close?
Thank you, Mr. President. I urge your support.
Bill's been moved and seconded. This is R4, as amended. Those in favor, say yes, raise your hand. Yes, those opposed, no. Motion passes. We'll go to item D, Counsel Pena, R8.
Thank you, Mr. President. R8 is amending the adopted capital implementation program of the city of Albuquerque by approving new projects, supplementing current appropriations, and changing the scope of existing projects. I move a do pass.
A motion, second by Counsel Grouse, my Vice President Grouse for a do pass. This is R8. Councilors, any questions?
And then, Mr. President, there's some...
Floor amendment, back to either Counsel Baca, Feebacorn, or Grouse? Counsel Grouse.
Mr. President, floor amendment number one to R24-8, we're amending on page three, after line 15, add in the following. And this is just moving funding around for the WEC outdoor recreation space. I won't go through it all, but the explanation at the bottom, the amendment proposes moving old unused geo funds into the WEC outdoor space capital project and requires the administration to report on the expenses under the program, including a comprehensive breakdown of all costs and purpose of the expense. We need a second.
Moved and seconded by, moved and seconded by Counsel Rogers? By Counsel Feebacorn? Okay, this is floor amendment number one. Questions on, or discussion on floor amendment number one? That's been, amendment's been moved and seconded. Those in favor, raise your hand, say yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed, no. Motion passes, back in the bill. Counsel Grouse? Oh, we got a bunch of amendments. All right, go for it. Counsel Pena.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is floor amendment number two, and this is a, this amendment increases...
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We'll go to floor amendment number three. Counsel Pena.
Mr. President, our amendment, amendment number three is a technical adjustment to R23-190-101 appropriating the funds to, fund 265 to the economic...
Discussion, those in favor, say yes, raise your hand. Yes, those opposed, no. Floor amendment number four, these are all in your iPads, by the way, as well. Counsel Pena.
Thank you, Mr. President. Floor amendment number four is appropriate federal funding from New Mexico DOT for the AMPA Wide Bike Facilities Program, ongoing program to promote on-street bikeway activities, facilities, and programs as federal funds to the fiscal year 2024, funding to the existing AMPA Wide Bike Program.
Moved and seconded by Counsel Grouse. Discussion on amendment four. Been moved and seconded. Those in favor, say yes, raise your hand. Yes, those opposed, no. Motion passes. Floor amendment number five, Counsel Feebacorn.
Mr. President, I'm not moving floor...
No, okay. All right. Anyone sign up to speak on this bill?
We have one speaker, Mr. President. That speaker is Andrea. Call the room.
Hi, sorry, I'm speaking again. Hate to belabor the meeting. I know you all have been here for a minute, but I just wanted to, you know, this is a really interesting time to see sort of like some changes to a CIP bill that had already been approved previously. Something that, you know, I keep hearing about time and time again in my community, I live on the Fourth Street corridor, is, you know, the lack of places for people to go use the bathroom, right? And last council meeting, you all passed the human feces bill, which really, we really appreciated. It was a hundred thousand dollar allocation for something that's going to last until July, which is a great start, right? But I think that if we are making some changes to capital projects, I would really encourage that we look at more permanent solutions to the issue of human feces. We're in the budget cycle right now. I think this is a really great opportunity to think about, you know, what that could look like infrastructure-wise, and whether that is, you know, actually putting in public toilets. There are some designs that include self-cleaning toilets that are really interesting, or actually funding a nonprofit to have like mobile units to actually provide those facilities in movable trailers along with showers and clothes washing stations, which I think would provide a more sanitary environment in general and then just support those in need. I think those kind of facilities would be helpful for tourists, for students, for folks that are taking the bus regularly. And just, you know, I mean, honestly, my friends, you know, I've had a couple of pregnant friends, they can't find anywhere to pee. You know, I'm saying, if you're holding a baby and you're eight months pregnant, you need to go to the bathroom. So I'm just, you know, I think this is just like a general interest of the public, of folks across all different lived experiences right now. Las Cruces actually just got a state appropriation for $500,000 for each toilet. So there is sort of like some precedent there in terms of installing those in New Mexican cities. So I would just encourage you to look into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our lone speaker, Mr. President.
Okay, councilors, I believe you all have one more floor amendment. This will be floor amendment number five, so the sponsors.
Mr. President...
Counsel Hassan.
Did you say four? This is four?
Uh, five.
Five. I'd like to move amendment five, on page three, after line 15, add the following. The following programs and projects are designated solely for the youth navigation center campus and/or youth shelter in Albuquerque. Expenses related to this property are permitted without prior approval, provided they are exclusively for this location. However, this authorization does not encompass the conversion of the property into transitional housing solely for the purpose of meeting the 5,000 units in five years' goal. It goes into the appropriations, and then the scope is to acquire rights of way and land for and to plan, design, construct, furnish, install, and equip, and otherwise improve a youth navigation center campus and/or youth shelter to provide temporary housing for youth in Albuquerque. We wanted to make sure to clearly define the use of the specific program within the city's CIP for the purchase of this particular property and all the expenses that have been encumbered and accumulated to date, and that we will keep continuing to accumulate for this specific vision, property, and project. So we wanted to make sure to legislate that so that we can make sure to be all very clear on what's, what's the funding for this versus maybe a potential other facility in Albuquerque that still will help with housing, but not necessarily specific to this project.
Well, this amendment five has been moved and seconded. Well, this amendment five has been moved and seconded. Counselors, any discussion? Okay, we're going to vote. Those in favor say yes, raise your hand. Yes. Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Back in the bill. Administration, any comments on this bill? Okay. So we're back in the bill. It's been moved and seconded and amended five times. Sponsors, anything else? All right, we'll go to a vote. This is, again, R twenty-four eight. Those in favor say yes, raise your hand. Yes. Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item E is R nineteen. Counsel Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. R nineteen is establishing the Route sixty-six Centennial Celebration twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six project plan as a policy plan, designating the Department of Arts and Culture as a project plan coordinator directing the Department of Arts and Culture to provide a city council with quarterly updates per R twenty-three one seventy-five and R twenty-four eleven. I move a do pass.
Moved and seconded by Vice President Group. Anybody signed up to speak on this?
No, Mr. President.
Nope. Administration, any comments on it? Counselors, any discussion on it? Counsel Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a question in reading the line of the plan from Arts and Culture. They had a hundred thousand dollars for the project plan coordinator. Do you know if that's for both of years or is that just for one? Because it's twenty-five, twenty-six. So is that fifty thousand for each year or a hundred thousand for both? Like, what's the salary for that person?
Director Santos.
Counsel President, Counsel Rogers. It's about a hundred thousand dollars per year for project management. That includes one full-time staff who's dedicated to all the projects as well as some supporting contracts for different components of, you know, all the different things that are going on.
Okay, so maybe we could just update that in the plan because it just said a hundred thousand for the one year.
Okay.
So we would need to appropriate for two years or just one? Twenty-five, twenty-six?
Yes. Counselor, we would need a hundred thousand dollars in each of those years.
Okay, thank you so much for clarifying that.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of R twenty-four nineteen, raise your hand and say yes. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. We are now on to R twenty-four dash twenty-three. Counsel Sanchez.
Counsel Group.
Yes.
Counseler Champagne, I didn't get your raised hands. Thank you.
Counsel Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Vice President. R twenty-four twenty-three, amending the official list of city council meetings from January twenty twenty-four through December twenty twenty-four. This resolution proposes to amend R twenty-three sixty-seven, which set the official list of city council meetings for twenty twenty-four. The resolution proposes canceling the April first twenty twenty-four city council meeting due to that date being the first Monday of APS spring break and because many people travel over the weekend, which make it difficult to achieve a quorum and members of the public may not be able to attend this date. This resolution would move the April first meeting date to Wednesday, April third instead. And I moved a do pass.
It's been moved and seconded by Counseler Champagne. Counselors, any discussion, questions? Just real quick, I think this is just a... I think we have to do this formally, obviously, so that we can, you know, publicize this and make it right. I think normally, in a typical schedule, we probably would have, you know, caught this a year ago as we were doing this. But it makes sense just to move from Monday to Wednesday that week. Other discussion? Counsel Fieblicorn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't agree that this makes sense. I'm not sure I understand the rationale for needing to move it. We've had this schedule out for some time. I, for one, have made other commitments on that Wednesday evening, and we do have a policy at council that allows counselors to attend hybrid so that they can do so from wherever they happen to be. We also allow people from the public to join us in a hybrid manner. So I'm just... I would love to hear more about why we would need to do this.
I think Counsel Sanchez stated it and read it. But anybody signed up to speak on this?
No, Mr. President.
And administration? I don't know why you'd want to... Okay, thanks, sir. Counselors, any other discussion? We'll go to a vote. This is R twenty-three. Those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes. Those opposed, no. That's eight to one. All right, Counsel Sanchez. Seven to one. Counsel Sanchez, item G.
Thank you, Mr. President. R twenty-four, directing the city administration to request a multi-agency investigation into the February seventeen twenty twenty-four incident involving Chief of Police Harold Medina. I move a do pass.
A motion is second for a do pass. Seconded by Counsel Champagne. Back to Counsel Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Real quickly, as a retired police officer, I could say myself and Counseler Champagne have a unique ability and experience to actually probably put this resolution together. From the time and the first day that we are police officers and we enter the police academy, we are told at that time that we will be held to the highest standards as a police officer. We take an oath of office that states just that. I'm quite embarrassed that we have to draft this resolution at this time. The mayor should have went this route from the beginning when this accident happened. What I'm curious, too, is about Chief Medina's first radio transmission after the accident. Anyone who's above the rank or the rank of sergeant or above is trained on critical incident management. Critical incident management is a protocol that all officers use, and they're trained on it. And we go through hundreds and hundreds of scenarios in reference to critical incident management. Critical incident management is there for a reason. It's there to protect lives, to protect property, protect evidence and to maintain witnesses in any police action. And what that does is also make sure that we did our job to the best of our ability. So based on that, anyone with a rank of sergeant or above should have actually heard a transmission over the air that said something like this. Car one PD, secure the frequency. I'm out with an aggravated assault with a deadly weapon and shots are fired, and I have a serious injury accident. Start rescue and ambulance for a sixty-year-old male. The offender is running westbound wearing black clothing. And at that point, my danger zone or my kill zone is this. At that point, it should have been established immediately. There should have been an inner perimeter, an outer perimeter established. Officers should have been responding with quite a bit of amount of officers should have been responding. After all, that's the chief of police. Once you get an inner perimeter, you establish an outer perimeter. You establish a command post, and you establish a staging area. When you set the inner perimeter, you set the inner perimeter for the sole purpose of making sure that there's no... To try to lock in the offender into that area. And that should have been done immediately so that way the offender wouldn't escape. The other thing that you want to do is you want to preserve the evidence at the scene and make sure that you have the inner perimeter set up as your primary working of that scene. You're protecting the evidence. You're protecting to make sure that no witnesses escape and/or leave the area to make sure that it's done correctly. Once you start requesting your resources, you're going to request your ambulance. You're going to request the traffic unit. And if it was me at that scene, I would have immediately requested for transparency, a multi-agency personnel to handle the investigation based on the fact that I was police chief. That would have been done immediately. That would have been the basic source of the first transmission that should have occurred. Anything else would have been a failure. When I watch the video, watching that video in reference to what happens, it just does not compute. So the purpose of this resolution is one hundred percent transparency. We need the mayor to hold our police chief accountable to the highest standards as he was told when he entered the police academy his first day. The citizens of Albuquerque need to regain their trust in their police department. And that trust begins with the number one person in charge of that, and that's the purpose of this resolution.
Counsel, before we go to that vote, Counsel Pisan, I'm sorry. Just want to make sure nobody signed up to speak. We'll go to Counsel Pisan. Administration want to weigh in on this. It's fine, too. Counsel Pisan.
Mr. President, I... A couple of questions based off of what Counseler Sanchez, and I don't know what can be divulged or not. It's my understanding the investigation has been conducted or whatnot. But is there a way to tell us? I mean, Counseler Sanchez illuminated us as to what his vision of how the proper protocol would go. Do we know if that was how it went or not? Because I have seen the video, but when I only see the video, that doesn't mean that I know all of the side of the story or all of what happened and transpired in addition to what the response was, whether it be from the chief or from APD themselves.
Mr. President, Counselor Pisan. I think we have provided quite a bit of information into the public through the media's requests and done so. I also know that we did more than we would typically do by implementing Motors to do the investigation at the scene. And we are more than happy to provide a briefing to council related to that investigation in closed session. If that's something that you all would like to request, we can, once that investigation is complete, including as well, once it goes toward to the crash review board, all of those matters can be discussed in closed session if you all would like to.
Mr. President. And is there reason to believe that APD is incapable of holding the chief to the highest standards?
Mr. President and Counselor Pisan, thank you for the question because I think it's really important. It goes to exactly what we spoke to this earlier in the evening when we had Superintendent Eric Garcia discuss how IA is an independent entity. It's important to note that not only did Motors do the investigation of the scene, which is beyond what would have been required based in this situation, but at the request of chief to ensure that we met the highest level of investigation from APD. But additionally, the IA investigation related to SOP and policy within the department has been, will be and is being performed under the Superintendent of Police Reform. I believe that that independent review will be thorough and meet the standard that we expect. It's important to note that will all come to me as the chief's direct supervisor to review and determine if we need to do anything additional related to the matter, not only from a disciplinary recommendation that comes from those investigations, but also whether or not we believe it was thorough and met the standard.
Mr. President, is there... What would the administration say and what would be the result about having an inter-agency investigation occur?
Mr. President and Counselor Pisan, we have always welcomed the scrutiny of others in terms of reviewing how we do what we do as a public entity. And, you know, we invite others if they would deem that necessary. I will say that typically an inter-agency, multi-agency investigation does not have all of these parties involved. And so we would need to determine if that is appropriate once we have seen this investigation concluded.
Okay.
I mean, they'd be available. I mean, like another agency would have all those parties available to them, correct? I mean, you wouldn't hold anybody back from talking to another agency? Of course not.
Mr. President, no. We're not holding anyone back from talking, speaking to another agency.
Well, Counsel Champagne.
Thank you, Counsel. Mr. President. I think the ultimate reason for this isn't the question of the investigation by this independent, as you put it in what Deputy Chief Garcia had said, is an independence that body of the city. Looking at his presentation, there are still sworn officers that are doing this investigation. Those sworn officers have X amount of years on. Could be ten, could be fifteen or twenty. The fact that they are going to investigate their boss and recommend something couldn't come back to bite them years down the line when they put in for another position. I think the request or the spirit of this request is really in the sense that you have the top police officer get involved in an incident that could show possible SOP violations due to the fact of what the public is seeing
to conduct an investigation if the Internal Affairs Division is, is investigating the same subject matter. There has never been an inspector general investigation into whether an officer turned on his OBRD or not. So it's just, it's outside the purview of the inspector general. I just wanted to say, I also do have a concern here, just in terms of separation of powers in general. The decision as to how to conduct a particular investigation is an executive function to be decided by the administration. Just wanted to.
Hang on, you, you have a question of our authority to do this, or separation of powers?
You direct the administration to conduct an investigation in a particular.
I think we can direct whatever we want to do, you know? They could do it or not, but we can do whatever we want to do in that regard. You're saying legally, we may not be able to do that?
Well, that legally may not be enforceable.
Well, we may, we may be able to, though. Counsel Feebecorn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a couple of questions on our ability. It says that we shall include the New Mexico State Police, Burnley County Sheriff's Office, and the New Mexico Department of Justice. We don't have any purview to require them to do anything, right? I'm misunderstanding.
Mr. President, Counsel Feebecorn, that's correct. We cannot direct them. We can ask, we could inquire, and we can ask. So the first sentence seems to be saying we can ask them, but the second sentence says that they have to be involved, and I just, I was unclear on how we could actually say they shall be involved. It's really up to them. I'm going to ask Ms. Goulon.
Mr. President, Counsel Feebecorn, I, I think, and the sponsor can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the intent is to say that the investigation request shall include the following entities. That would be an easy amendment for us to put together, if that is what the sponsor intends.
All right, I think it's pretty clear. Councillors, any other discussion? I mean, just real quick again, if this passes tonight, you know, it better be enforceable, and, and we, I mean, it's, it's unbelievable, though, that that would just even be brought up, you know? So Counsel Bach, anybody else, discussion? So Counsel Bach.
Mr. President, thank you. Too quick. First one is slightly unrelated. I haven't heard anything with the gentleman who was struck. How's he doing? Is he okay? What's happening? I mean, and I realize maybe there's some HIPAA and all that, but I'm concerned that someone was hit and hurt.
Mr. President, Counseler Bach, I'd be happy to get an update. I haven't received one recently, and I would be misspeaking regarding his condition if I did.
Thank you. And, and then my, my second part was just.
I just wanted to respond to that.
Oh, go ahead.
Just a moment. Counsel, Counsel Bach, you have anything else? Or did, were you?
I did, but he was going to respond to the first part.
Okay. Counsel Sanchez, you have to respond to that.
Thank you. I was going to respond to the, sorry about that, Counselor. I just wanted to let you know that Chief Medina has mentioned that the individual that he struck does not want to have contact with him.
That, that's fine. I was asking how he's doing, not their relationship. That's a separate.
Appreciate you bringing that up, Counsel Bach.
Yeah. No, no, ah, thank you. I just, I had read this initially as a, my understanding as counsel, we don't have, how do I say it? Gosh, I'm blank now, purview over HR matters, so to speak, because we're not the executive branch. I'm, I'm very much a believer that everyone should be held accountable to, to the highest standard possible. If the chief has done something wrong, the process will, will show that, and he'll be held to whatever standard, or whatever the outcome is. However, we, I don't see, given that we have an independent IA that we, that we heard from earlier, and it's under the, the mayor then to make a decision, and hopefully he makes the correct decision based on the information he gets, that's, I don't, I don't really see where this, where this goes. I just want to put that out there, that I don't really support it. I support it, but not really. I guess that's not the way to do it. I think there's a process to follow.
All right, any other discussion, questions? Mr. Pria?
Counsel President, we do have that amendment drafted. If you'd like us to proceed with that amendment.
You want to clearly state the amendment, please?
Yes, Mr. President. So the amendment reads on page one, line twenty-two, insert the word "request" as follows, and then I just copied that paragraph in. Investigation request shall include at a minimum, and then the rest of that.
Mr. President, before that gets moved, isn't that already in here? It says on page one, line twenty, "The city administration is directed to request a multi-agency investigation."
Mr. President, Counsel Hassan, this is a clarification to the following sentence that reads, "The investigation shall include at a minimum," just to clarify that we don't have the authority to compel those other agencies, and the administration is just directed to request that they participate in the investigation.
Yeah, rather, so rather than shall include, it's just requesting that one of those agencies are, are all, okay. Everybody's clear on that amendment? So this is amendment number one to R twenty-four. Any other discussion on it? Those in favor say yes, raise your hand. Yes. Those opposed, no. Motion passes. This is the bill as amended. Anything else from the sponsors before we vote? Counsel Groul.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I respect the process. I'm glad that IA is looking into it. But we've had so many people out in the community ask us to do something, and I don't think that asking outside agencies to also look into it, and then just substantiate what IA may be finding out, or anything, if nothing was done improperly, then there shouldn't be a problem. And if something did happen, I hope that IA finds out, and I hope that the other team also finds out. We just want to have some accountability. I'm not saying anything was done improperly, but I think there are a lot of people that are requesting a lot of more bold things, and I think that this is a compromise, and I don't think that there's anything wrong with looking for, making sure that that accountability was done, has been done, and the procedures were done right. So for that reason, I'm, I'm inclined to vote for it, and not saying that IA is not going to do their job right, but I don't think it's going to hurt to go this avenue as well.
All right, yeah, I don't think this hurts anything. I think if anything, it should be welcomed. You know, I think the chief should be, you know, welcome this, too. I mean, if anything, it would just confirm, you know, you know, clearing him in some ways that I think would be helpful, you know, to him and to the administration. So with that, we'll go to a vote. This is R twenty-four as amended. Those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes. Those opposed, no. That motion, it, it fails on a five to four. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.